...in your feet. The other thing about Prado low problems is that they hate blood sugar fluctuations. So once again, I'm telling you, one of the easiest ways to help control this peripheral neuropathy is watch your blood sugar. If you're diabetic, that's a sure sign that you're probably going to come down with some kind of peripheral neuropathy in the future. So these are the things you want to watch is the blood sugar. You want to watch your anti-inflammatory foods. Now go get this checked out by a professional. Maybe it is in your feet, but the most likely problem is it is not. It's more likely a brain problem or more likely a blood sugar or metabolic problem. If you can't get these conditions checked out and get them taken care of by these professionals, some of these other therapies can help like brain-based therapy or metabolic nutrition. I'm going to urge you to take care of these blood sugar problems. All senior citizens seem to experience them, but you could take care of it a lot better if you catch it before it becomes a diabetes kind of problem.
We are continuing our conversations today with the Wise and Healthy Aging Center here in Santa Monica, and I'd like to introduce you to Eric Engel, an attorney at law, who is also a vice chair of the Mar Vista Wise Connections, correct?
Correct.
Great, Eric, welcome, welcome. Thank you for making time for us today. How do you see your function in this? This is kind of a startup program and new, so you're inventing this as you go.
Yes, we are. We're using a village model that was started with Beacon Hill area in Boston, but we are certainly innovating as we go to develop our systems. And it takes a lot of resources, essentially the community. It's a very grassroots oriented proposition. And we've also been fortunate enough to have the resources of Wise and Healthy Aging in Santa Monica to help us with a lot of the administrative aspects.
Yeah, go to the experts in the field. I sure had to discover that. Even though there's this big bubble of baby boomers coming into the aging population, the truth is these issues with seniors and the services they need have been with us for a long, long time. Some of the things that you're able to help with and coordinate with when someone is approached about an investment opportunity to kind of give wise counsel, if you will.
Yes, we're, we're actually set up around a one call does it all kind of concept that we have a single phone number that a member can call for whatever resources they need, whether it's sitting in to listen to a financial investment pitch if they've been approached, for example, or to connect them with an advisory service where they can get, you know, independent consultations about whether this is a good idea or not. For example, Wise and Healthy Aging has a reverse mortgage program, for example. That's a common situation. We could connect people with that, of course. And often people just seem to want, you know, a neutral ear, somebody to sit in and listen and be able to talk to them separately about whether this is a program they might want to get involved in or not. We don't give investment advice per se. That's not the concept, but we would connect them with people who can help them through the situation.
Well, on the issue of finding qualified or being able to recommend qualified vendors, that is a critical issue because seniors often through their own naivete can lose their homes with these mechanic leans. And I understand you're in the process of actually qualifying vendors now, whether it's a plumber or contractor.
That's correct. We've gotten our first applications in and our startup program from the vendors, and a lot of them are contractors, electricians and plumbers and so forth, handymen even. And the, that process is very important. There are a lot of records that are available. We, we have the resources to investigate, you know, the contractors that, you know, seniors may not always think to go and investigate. And it is very important because seniors can get themselves in a lot of trouble very quickly with a bad contractor.
Well, I know one of the things I like to explain to family members, caregivers, is that you can save yourself a lot of grief if you have a single resource, a place to call, just to make sure you're making the right decisions on behalf of your parents. I love the fact that with Wise and Healthy Aging, it's a membership program and you can actually purchase a membership for mom and dad just to protect them.
That, that's correct. And the idea is, you know, we're there to support the caregivers as well as the seniors who are getting the direct service, but the caregivers may well want to call us as well or, you know, telling us there's an issue that we, that we may want to address. And, you know, we can contact our members and talk to them about that.
Right. It's a, especially when you get to end of life issues. I know for me, the, having a fair witness come and sort of manage a family discussion so that we have no hard feelings, these are the facts, these are the issues you're going to be facing. Now, how will we address that? That's very important.
Right. And that's part of the one call does it all kind of service that we can send volunteers, qualified social workers, whatever is needed for the situation to just attend and help facilitate whatever is going on. We held small sessions with, you know, people in the early stages of developing the program, you know, small group discussions, and we're continuing to hold living room sessions on those now. And one of the things that struck me in the course of the discussions was that people often just want somebody there for a small event, even as small as, you know, I want to climb a ladder to change a light bulb. I'd really prefer to have somebody there to make sure nothing goes wrong.
That's right. Well, it's hard to give up those household chores that we took for granted when we were younger, I mean, cleaning the rain gutters, for example. How many times do you have to see in a newspaper, the elderly man up on his roof who, you know, sadly has a fatal fall and just some, even if it's someone to say, no, that's not a good idea? Or to hold the ladder.
Right.
Now, feedback, we were talking earlier before we sat down today about the feedbacks that members and participants are going to be asked to actively give their impressions of vendors and the services offered?
Yes, that's a very important part of it is we, we intend to call the members after the services provided, make sure it was completed to their satisfaction and ask them for general feedback of how well the vendor provided the services. Is there anything that needs to be followed up? And to act as an intermediary if there is any issue with the vendor to find out what exactly it is. Maybe it's just a follow-up call, or maybe there's a real problem and we need to address that with the vendor.
Eric, thank you so much for coming and joining us today and explaining a little bit more about the program, Wise and Healthy Aging. We'll be back.
Cooking? Washing greasy food byproducts down the sink? Yes? Do you like clogged and blocked sewer lines that might cause a spill in your street or home? No? Well, neither do we. So please use paper towels to wipe oils and grease from your cooking utensils and throw away all the greasy items into the trash can. Doing so will help prevent grease blockages and keep the sewage where it belongs, in the pipes, and help us protect the environment and you.
Really like.
An emergency can happen at any time. That's why you need to be prepared. Put together an emergency kit with food, water, a first aid kit, a flashlight, radio, and some tools.
I can't believe it, it's an earthquake!
You're never too old to prepare.
Ah, get out of there!
Get the message? Be prepared.
Get out of my house!
And now it's time for another new segment of our Aging in L.A. show, Caregiver's Corner.
As a family caregiver, one of the biggest challenges is learning to manage our stress. Stress is what happens when we are overwhelmed, having more to do than what we can handle. And so we need to find a way to manage stress. But oftentimes, that's easier said than done, isn't it? So let me tell you a little bit about how you can work on it. First, you need to recognize it. Try and figure out what is it that sets you off? What is it that starts to raise your stress level? What are some of the signs that the stress is coming in? Is it because you feel more irritable? Because you cry a little easier? You snap at people? Or you withdraw? You need to recognize the symptoms so that then you can start taking some steps towards correcting it. Identify the sources of your stress. Is it that you feel you have too much to do? Perhaps you need to delegate some of those tasks? Perhaps you're not getting enough sleep? Perhaps you just feel you're not being understood? Or sometimes it's when you have to answer that same repeated question several times again. So how can you handle it? How can you reduce your stress levels? Think about things that you can do easily, like stepping out of the room, taking some deep breaths, just to catch yourself, collect yourself again. Get some oxygen back into your blood, which goes into your brain and helps you calm down. Perhaps even take a short little walk outside. Find ways that you can try to reduce your stress. Determine what you can and cannot change. Those things that you cannot change, you need to then find a different way to cope with them. But the things that you can change, even the smallest change can make a big difference. You need to take action. If you identify that you need help and you don't take any action, that can be very detrimental to your health, your mental health, emotional and physical. So make sure that you start to size up what and how you can make some changes that will improve the situation in caregiving. On the other hand, failure to take action can have all kinds of side effects, too. It can bring on depression. It can affect your relationships, not only with the care receiver, but with the entire family. It can be very detrimental to your health. As we say, your mental, emotional and physical well-being are very important. You may want to change the situation. For example, if the care receiver is taking the medications on their own more often than they should, the situation needs to be changed by you having movement of the medications somewhere where they are not visible. That way, they're out of sight and the care receiver no longer is thinking about taking meds constantly. Another thing you may want to look at is changing the perception of how you view things. If it makes you angry that someone is asking you the same question over and over again, change your perception and understand it's the illness, it's not the person that's trying to be difficult. Change your response. Say, here's a few crackers to hold you until dinnertime. We'll be eating at 6 o'clock. Because to say to the person, don't you remember we always eat at 6 o'clock? That's really not helping the situation. But the way you respond to it settles things down for everybody and it makes for better quality of life for the whole family.
Now we're going to visit with Barbara Browning, a longtime Santa Monica resident, recently retired, who now volunteers for the Wise and Healthy Aging Program. Welcome.
Thank you.
Now, volunteering can be very satisfying or sometimes so frustrating, but as a case manager with the local hospital here, you have seen how many needs there are with seniors.
Yes, and there definitely, there isn't a senior that doesn't have a need that I don't feel that we can address.
And that's very important, from basic transportation, how do you get the bus pass or to get to the doctor's appointment, to more serious issues like making sure the medications are appropriate.
Yes, and sometimes people just want to be checked on, the security of sons and daughters, nieces and nephews that are busy.
And I'm struck by how often seniors are living alone and they need someone to help them.
There is, and that's a choice that they've made, that they want to remain in their home and they want to remain as independent as possible.
Well, and of course, being able to age in place in your home is a great comfort to our seniors.
Yes, it is.
Now, delivering services to the home, things like checking on, I don't know, making sure the rugs are tied down and if there are grab bars in the bathroom facilities, these are all the things that, that you can help with, right?
Yes, definitely. And as, as we go into the home, we can identify things that maybe other people might not identify.
Oh, yes, indeed. And that's important. Now, as a, as a person starting up a program, are you relying on the contacts you've made over all the years to go and talk to people, say, come and join us for a conversation?
Oh, definitely. And that's a good place to start because people know you and hopefully you have a reputation that they can, can trust. So that's really where you have to start. And then with the contacts that they have, it, it will grow.
Well, and it needs to because with Wise and Healthy Aging, it is a community-based program, and Santa Monica is wonderful about that because there is an existing sense of community.
Yes, it is. And people in certain neighborhoods know each other, but this also provides an opportunity that they have some privacy to, that they can manage, make a phone call and get the needs met without contacting their neighbors or their families sometimes.
Well, I keep telling people, don't be embarrassed about asking for help. For example, having meals delivered is not a sin. It is not something to be embarrassed about. It's a service that is offered to our communities.
Yes, it definitely is, but to the older person, sometimes it's a sign to them that they can't do something. So if they can be the ones that can initiate the phone call and do it through an outside agency, it's easier for them often.
And it's important, too, for caregivers to have a resource so they can bounce ideas off them or express their concerns.
Yes, and older people often are more receptive to outside suggestions to those within their family.
Yeah, because none of that family baggage.
Right, exactly.
Well, of course. And what I've found, too, is that some of our older volunteers, who may be candidates for these kind of services, are actually quite energetic and committed to their community.
Oh, they are. And the beauty of this is that you can be a member and you can be a volunteer also.
Oh, at the same time.
So you can reach out and yet receive the services yourself.
We're, we're going to take a look now at the Santa Monica Governing Council as they have a discussion.
Number seven on our agenda, talking about some event or a potential open house in January of next year.
Okay. What comes to mind for me right away is to have maybe posters of different villages or different aspects of the, of the program that people could actually go around and look at. And perhaps one of us could be at each station to talk about, you know, I don't know, we can think about the content of the posters. If we plan a short piece of time for some kind of presentation, we could have a little panel of maybe three members.
You might want to have some little keynote or celeb, you know, I don't want to say a celebrity, but it could be an official, you know, some, you know, someone elected official or, or celebrity or, or somebody. Might be nice to help you get some, you know, for promotions and getting some attention. I don't know who that would be, but.
Well, we could think about that.
Yeah.
Someone that would be.
We just don't want to have too much of a program.
Yeah.
No.
Too much. Or we could have things at different times.
I think that's a great suggestion.
And now it's time to hear from Brenda Barnett from the Department of Animal Services.
I'm here with my little friend Fiona, who is a shelter animal that I have at home with me on foster care. And foster care for adult animals is one of our newer programs. So Fiona is seven to 10 years old. She's a perfect companion for the Seniors for Senior Program. And what's really neat about the foster program is not only is Fiona getting the home care that she deserves, but she also is gaining a little bit of weight. And I've learned some very neat things about her. She's house-trained. She likes to walk on a leash. She loves to sit on your lap. So, you know, when we have these little dogs out in foster care, we learn a lot about them that we can share with the adopters. The same thing is true for the kitties. Sometimes you'll have a kitty in the shelter who just seems like she's a little depressed, she's not paying much attention. You take one of those kitties at home, let it sit on a lap for a few days, let it get hand treats, and it's great because when they come back, then they're looking for the person to pet them. So another way that you can help with it at the shelter is to take home some of these companion animals and let them stay with you for a few days, a few weeks or a few months. And it expands the walls of our shelter without us having to build more shelter space. So we hardly recommend, and we're looking for help with this foster care program. You can get foster animals at all the shelters. It's a program that we're rolling out. We're starting at a couple of the shelters and then it will start in all the shelters. So this is a great supplemental way. It's also a way to take an animal home, foster it for a little while. And if you happen to fall in love with your foster, then you can go ahead and adopt it. Now, that's not going to happen for me and Fiona because I have other dogs at home and Fiona probably wants to be the only dog in your life. So, you know, Fiona needs to go to a home where there's maybe one other dog or no dogs at all, and she'll be your best friend for life.
That's all the time we have for today's show, and I sure hope you enjoyed the new format. I'm Paul Peterson, and I hope to see you again for Aging in L.A.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth. Offering you a taste of New Orleans since 1986. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the City Council meeting for Wednesday, June 22, 2011. We're here in the John Varro Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall. We meet here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. And I'd like to welcome members of the public who have joined us here today, as well as our city staff and others who are here in the Council Chambers. We're also available in the Van Nuys and San Pedro Council Chambers, if that's closer to where you live. And you can testify remotely from there, as well as on cable television, your computer, and your telephone. On cable, you can tune into Channel 35 throughout the city of Los Angeles and watch these meetings. Online, you can visit our website at lacity.org and see live streaming video of our council meetings and archived footage of our past council meetings. And finally, by calling 213-621-CITY, you can listen in using our telephone. We have agendas available for the public. We have 11 members here. Ms. Hahn is excused today, but we are expecting Mr. Parks, Mr. Weezer, and Mr. Krikorian to join us. They are late right now, if they will please join us right away, but we do have a quorum. So with that, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll so we can begin the meeting.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Hahn, Weezer, Corretts, Krikorian, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendall, Smith, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 11 members present, and a quorum. Mr. President.
Shhh. If we can bring, please, the chambers to order. And our first items to run through on the -- sorry, first order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Smith moves, and Mr. Rosendall seconds. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
All right, Mr. Labange moves, and Mr. Corretts seconds, without objection. And now, if we can run through the agenda. And colleagues, if I can ask you to turn your attention to the items before us today. Almost all of these have been heard in committee previously, but a few of them have not been. And any special items that you'd wish to call for further discussion, please direct your attention to the agenda this time. First items, please.
Mr. President, items 1 through 3 are items noticed for public hearing.
Okay, do we have cards on any of these?
We do have a card on item number 1.
Okay, we'll call that special for card from the public. We'll close the public hearing on items 2 and 3. These are ordinances requiring 12 members on first vote, so as we await, Mr. Weezer, Mr. Krikorian, and Mr. Parks, let's hold those on the desk as well. Next items, please.
Mr. President, items 4 through 19 are items for which public hearings have been held. There is a request from a member to refer item 6 back to the Housing, Community, and Economic Development Committee for further consideration.
All right, without objection, let's refer number 6 back. We will call 14 special for Mr. Parks, as well as number 15 through 19.
Mr. President, items 4 and 5 are commissioned appointments. Would you like to hold those on the desk?
Yes, please, let's add 4 and 5 to that as well.
Additionally, committee reports have been submitted and distributed to council for its consideration for those two matters.
Okay. Yes, Mr. --
14 special for Councilmember Alarcon.
I got a special for Mr. Parks, too. We'll double it up for Mr. Alarcon. Yeah, I got Parks. Did you say Parks?
Parks.
Okay. So we'll double call special. 14 through 19 for Parks. 14 through 19. And we are still awaiting our 12th member, so let's hold items 7 and 8, our ordinances, until we do have one more member. And if we go to the items 9 through 13, if nobody wishes to call 9 through 13 special, let's go ahead and open the roll. Oh, Mr. Labange, on 9 through 13? Okay, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Mr. Labange, you had a great swearing-in ceremony at the top of Mount Hollywood last night. Congratulations again, and I'd like to recognize you.
Thank you. Well, thank you. I think it's item number -- which is 21 on the -- I'm waiting for three more.
Okay, no problem. And if we can take up items 2, 3, 7, and 8, with Mr. Krikorian's arrival, we have 12 members now. So let's go ahead on 2, 3, 7, and 8. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Mr. President, items 20 through 31 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, there's no objection to consideration. Those are before us. Do we have any cards from the public on any of these items that have not yet had a public hearing?
Mr. President, yes, we do. We have cards for items 20, 21, 22, 23, 25, 28, and 31.
Okay, we'll close the public hearings on the balance. Any specials on items 20 through 31? Mr. Labange, did you have specials from 20 to 31?
Well, 22, but the staff was here, but it's been called special, so we're --
Okay. I just want to make sure that after the cards, we call on the council members who wish those to be special, so if there's no other specials, that leaves us with 24, 26, 27, 29, and 30 for a vote. Let's go ahead and take up that balance. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. Next items, please.
Items 32 through 36 are items noticed for closed session. Would you like to hold them on the desk?
Let's go ahead and take items 32 through 34 in open session, if we can walk through each one of those.
Very good. Item 32, there is a recommendation for settlement in the amount of $185,000 through a compromise and release in the case entitled Charles Baylor versus City of Los Angeles.
Okay. Anybody wishing to speak on item 32? If not, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
32 is approved. Next item, number 32.
Item 33, there's a recommendation for settlement in the amount of $130,000 through a compromise and release in the case entitled Renee Dillon versus City of Los Angeles.
Okay. Anybody wishing to be heard on that? If not, let's go ahead and prepare the roll on 33 and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, Mr. Weezer is here. Let's go ahead and open the -- sorry, let's take up 34. Mr. -- okay.
Item 34, there is a recommendation for settlement in the amount of $181,777.50 through a stipulated award in the case entitled Richard Wells versus City of Los Angeles.
Okay, let's go ahead and prepare the roll on 34 and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes, 1 no.
All right, that is approved. And let's continue 35 and 30 -- not continue, but let's hold 35 and 36 for closed session. Take the next item, please. Item 37.
Mr. President, on the continuation agenda, item 37 is an item for which a public hearing has been held.
Mr. Smith?
It was on item 27, forthwith.
27, forthwith? Okay. Item 37, Mr. Cardenas?
If we could put that item over to July 26?
To July 26. I would -- I'd like to try to receive and file it today, so I'd object to that, so.
I know what you'd like to do, I know what I'd like to do.
So I'm just announcing that for folks, so let's go ahead and -- there's a vote to continue. This is -- Mr. Cardenas has moved, is there a second to continue to July 26? Okay, there's a second for Mr. Wesson. So a vote would put this over to the 26th, and a vote would take it up later today. Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote. Hold on, Mr. Zine's staff said that he wants to vote. The vote is whether or not to continue to the 26th, this item. The photo-red light item, this is item 37. Mr. Cardenas has moved Mr. Wesson second to continue this until July 26. I was going to move to receive and file later. Okay? So the roll is open, Mr. Zine? Push the button. There you go. Okay. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
8 ayes, 6 noes.
Okay, that has continued until the 26th of July. That can be reconsidered by somebody on the winning side. Mr. Smith was recorded as a yes.
Very, I'm on prevailing side, I move to reconsider.
Mr. Smith moves to reconsider. Please open the roll, reconsideration. Close the roll. So this is on reconsideration? Okay, Mr. Smith moved to reconsider? He was on the winning side of that?
I mean, yes, but it says no on my --
Okay, please open the roll. I know Mr. Reyes and Mr. Rosendall, who are showing as noes, should be yeses. Why don't we do -- let's go ahead and clear it, please. Okay, now, everybody, vote. Please open the roll and vote on reconsideration. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes, 3 noes.
Okay, that is reconsidered now, so we have that before us again. Mr. Cardenas, you want to move again to continue? Okay, Mr. Cardenas moves to continuation. Is there a second? Is there a second? Okay. Mr. Labange seconds Mr. Cardenas to continue to the 26th. Again, a yes vote is to continue, a no vote is -- sorry, Mr. Zine, point of --
Technical question.
Yes, point of order?
This matter was debated yesterday for a long period of time. We took a vote, and now we're continuing. Can I ask for the purpose of the continuation?
You may ask, sir.
Purpose of the continuation?
As I stated yesterday during debate, nothing changed between yesterday and today to speak of. The -- The current contract goes through July 31st. We did not end that contract. So the fact of the matter is, some matters may develop that were discussed yesterday between now and July 26th. They may. If they don't, hopefully, the debate will be short and sweet, and we'll end it once and for all. But that's all I'm saying. It gives us time for us to get more clarity.
Are you referring to the state legislature and the change of the law for the court?
Referring to the legislature, referring to an Arizona-based company. It may be that it won't be an Arizona-based company by then, that we can actually ratify that, et cetera, et cetera. So some pretty important items that you brought up, and many people brought up here, might actually change between now and July 26th, believe it or not. I'm saying it on the record, I believe what I'm saying. Thank you.
Okay. Everybody clear on what we're voting on? So the yes is a continuation to 26th, as I stated before.
Come on.
If it doesn't go forward, moving to receive and file later. Please open the roll on the continuation. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
7 ayes, 7 noes.
Okay, that is not continued. That will stay on for now, unless somebody wishes to receive and file or do something else.
Receive and file.
Okay, Mr. Zine? There's a second?
Receive and file.
We now have, and it may be the same vote as well, but we now have a vote to -- we now have a motion to receive and file this item? Okay?
Oh, yes.
Please open the roll.
Yes, and get rid of it.
Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
8 ayes, 6 noes.
That is received and filed. Now we'll go to our general public comment. Daniel -- yes, oh, sorry, there's an introduction from Mr. Alarcon, and then we'll go to --
Please, forthwith.
Forthwith, without objection.
Thank you.
Mr. Alarcon for an introduction, and then we'll go to public comment. Daniel Guss will be our first speaker.
I was reaching for my -- I was pressing my no, like yesterday, that noes don't work on some -- the bunge didn't work yesterday, mine didn't work today.
Okay, hold on, folks. We're going to do an oral vote on this? Let's clear. Let's do an oral vote on whether or not to continue to the 26th, this item? Okay? Sorry, sorry, whether to receive -- my apologies, thank you, Mr. Krikorian. Whether to receive and file, whether he wanted to be received and filed today. So please, Mr. Clerk, if you'll go through a -- Mr. Zine's motion, second by myself. Excuse me. Yes, sir.
You would have to reconsider and suspend the rules to do that.
We have done -- we have done on computer malfunctions, we've done it right away, and we've always done -- trying to stay consistent, obviously. I wouldn't mind the vote to go through as it is, but I'm trying to make sure. Yes, Ms. Perry?
Explain again why we have to vote a second time on the issue that we just voted on? Why are we voting on this again?
Mr. Weezer stood up, as we've done with many folks before, and said that his button did not work. We had issues with that before, earlier, because it wasn't cleared. Mr. Weezer said that he would have voted the opposite way of what he was recorded as.
And I would request that they be reviewed. Yesterday, Mr. Labange just didn't work, and mine didn't work, so they need to be reviewed.
I believe there's a virus spreading on that.
Smith this morning had a five-second rule.
To Mr. Smith's point, though, since we have gone forthwith, this rule requires to suspend the rules since we have gone forthwith on this. So please, let's go ahead and take a vote on the suspension of the rules first. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Okay. 8 ayes, 6 noes.
Mr. City Attorney, it's a 10 vote? Okay, that fails to suspend the rule.
It's in all seriousness.
Yes, Mr. Labange?
Mr. Weezer stood up immediately and voiced his malfunction. Mr. Smith, who I greatly --
I'll ask the city attorney --
Looked at the board and realized what he did.
Mr. Labange, I understand the point. I'll ask the city attorney for guidance on this. It's the forthwith nature of it had a specific rule in there, that we have to suspend the rules once something has been sent forthwith. So, Mr. City Attorney, if the -- if Mr. Weezer stood up and said that that was an incorrect vote, and his -- and there was a technical malfunction, what would your guidance be in terms of whether the rules need to be suspended, having sent that forthwith?
I don't know if a motion to suspend the rules is necessary. It could be done just at the discretion of the council president.
All right, in fairness, and I will keep it consistent, at my discretion, based on the city attorney's advice, we'll take an oral vote on receiving and filing this item. So if I can ask all members to please -- and Mr. City Clerk, if you'll please walk through. A yes vote is to receive and file, and a no vote is to continue this for a while.
Very good. Councilmember Alarcon?
No.
Councilmember Cardenas?
No.
She is not here, let the record reflect that, despite -- Councilmember Weezer.
Voices to the contrary?
No.
Councilmember Corretts?
Yes.
Councilmember Krikorian?
Aye.
Councilmember Labange?
No.
Councilmember Parks?
No.
Councilmember Perry?
No way, no how.
Councilmember Reyes?
Yes.
Councilmember Rosendall?
Yes, yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes, yes, yes.
Councilmember Wesson? Councilmember Zine? Council President Garcetti? Yes, and that's a 7-7 vote, folks, so despite people's attempts to vote two and three times, it is a 7-7 vote, so that also does not carry. All right, well, we will -- that will stay on the desk. We will now go to general public comment, and Daniel Guss will be our next speaker, or first speaker. I'm sorry, and, Mr. Guss, Mr. Alarcon was going to make a brief introduction, my apologies, you can stay right there, don't worry. Mr. Alarcon.
Councilmembers, I just wanted to introduce two visitors we have from Atlanta, Georgia. Vaughn Irons is the Chief Executive Officer of APD Solutions, and James Cromarty is the Business Development Director of APD. The reason I wanted to present them to you is because they have a program in conjunction with HUD to provide loans, low-interest loans with -- for primarily to clean up our foreclosed properties that have come into black. They -- their loan package includes 3.5% down payment. A credit score of as low as 580 gets you into the process. There's no income criteria, no cap, there's no -- there is criteria, but no income cap, I should say. For military, police, or firefighters, public safety officers, the credit score can be as low as 550 to get you into the process. I believe they have $100 million to initiate the program for the Southern California region, and because we have so many foreclosures in Los Angeles, this is a great opportunity for us to take advantage of this program. I urge you to contact your local real estate organizations to promote this program. I convened about 75 or 80 real estate agents in the Pacoima office, and they were very excited about this program. What makes this program unique is that -- well, there's several things that make it unique, but one of the key factors is that traditional banks are not wanting -- is the coupling of the home loan with repairs. So they will appraise the value of the home after repairs have been done. Traditional banks are not keen on financing these because the escrow process is so long because of the repairs. So they have commitments from first guaranteed mortgage and Ginger May. I'd never heard of Ginger May before, but Ginger May is very prominent on the East Coast, and they will finance these loans, recognizing the appraisal value after the repairs are completed. And so I urge you to take advantage of getting information about this and contacting APD Solutions. For the purposes of doing that, you can call my office, and we'll be happy to forward you the information. Thank you.
Thank you for your patience. Mr. Guss, you're our first speaker. Dr. Clyde Williams will be our second. Good morning.
Thank you, good morning. I wanted to thank Councilmember Rosendall for proactively pulling the plug on the pitbull breeding show that was going to take place next month in Venice Beach. Here is the flyer. This is no adoption event. This is about sales of animals and breeding of animals being done at Venice Beach. And Brenda Barnett has denied in writing that she issued a permit for this event. Well, here's an email from the promoter of the event, and he writes, I quote, "We applied for the exhibition permit at L.A. Animal Services. I did it in person, paid our fees, and received our permit to hold the show." So the question is, is the promoter lying, or is Ms. Barnett lying to City Council? And I guess the question is, if we have a mandatory spay-neuter law in Los Angeles, what are we doing allowing breeding shows in Venice Beach of all places? And the question is, will she be on top of the next breeding show? Because she wasn't on top of the last two breeding shows in Los Angeles, so either the promoter is lying, or Ms. Barnett is lying, as much as I hate to use that word. Speaking about dishonest, Ms. Barnett submitted a report to Mr. Parks about whether Animal Services removed a microchip from a private party's dog. And I believe that Ms. Barnett and Mr. Mark Salazar are scapegoating an employee of L.A. Animal Services, so let's call in this employee of the City of Los Angeles and find out, is he being scapegoated? And with respect to competence or incompetence of Ms. Barnett, we have a criminal trial coming up in about two weeks. It's me versus the City of Los Angeles, and let's see what happens as a result of that. Because Ms. Barnett would not know animal cruelty if it hit her square in the face, and she has now squandered LAPD time. she has now squandered LAPD time, city attorney time, the courts' time, the public defender's time, and let's see how this criminal trial's gonna turn out. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Clyde Williams, if you'd like to submit that, we'll get the sergeant's at arms, Dr. Clyde Williams is our next speaker. Thank you, Mr. Gus.
Yeah. Do you want me to write that? No. So, thank you.
Dr. Clyde Williams, El Sereno, Northeast L.A. The other day, we had a meeting of DWP community collaboration in Boyle Heights. The attendance was minimal, it was a farce. DWP has failed to provide presentation materials and other materials for these community collaborations for rate changes for the East Valley and effectively for East L.A. They have been a joke. In fact, some of the Spanish translations of some materials were incorrect or very incomplete, such as no pictures, no graphs, no bar charts. So the outreach for the rate has failed. We would like to propose that the rates be held in abeyance until the rate payer's advocate is in place and operational, so that we can be assured of some sort of actual participation. There's still time for another month before it was the summary meeting. So we'd like to have it revisited, especially for the Spanish-speaking areas of L.A., which only represents 40% or more of the population. It's a problem. For me, I want the rates increased. Why? Because water and power needs the money. However, I'm concerned about the productivity of the Department of Water and Power. There's no corporate strategic plan, there's no scale of productivity of units or programs or plans, and there's no rate change that's been effective in the past for reliability. We passed it once before, but they want to come back again.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. John Walsh is our next speaker, after that will be Olga Hall.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Ms. Han files, has filed for absence, excused absence, more than 30 times this year. Sometimes she shows up when she has excused herself officially, but I'm telling you, I don't want to pay for her when she's out running for Congress. But then again, this is a dysfunctional City Council, and I'm sure you're paying no attention, but the 70,000 people watching me in that camera, they're paying attention. $1 billion in deferred maintenance, 1 billion with a B on the bus and rail. If you get on, you're taking your life in your hands. And look, the rail that you run killed one person, I'm talking about Angels Flight, and it's been closed down again. And the rail system, thanks to people like me in our organization, not one single person has been killed on the red, the blue, the green, the gold, not one person, one person. A Holocaust survivor was killed on the Angels Flight. The blood is on your hands. Akli Padilla just got a job at CRA. He has no college degree, all he has is the blessing of Congressman Frank Cardenas up here. The CRA is abolished, you laughed at us, you said we would never do it, AB 26 was passed, both houses, CRA is abolished, Brown is signing the contract, go to redevelopment.com, go to HollywoodHighlands.com. This is a dysfunctional City Council. PUC, close down Devil's, Devil's Flight, not Angels Flight, Devil's Flight. And we don't want, as far as changing the street reamer to Conan O'Brien, absolutely not. Conan O'Brien deserves better than that. First and Main, right out here, let's call that Conan Square, Conan O'Brien Square. That's not a pun, we want Conan O'Brien Square. Vote for it now, HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Olga Hall is our next speaker, after that is Raul Vieramontes.
Good morning, members of the council and Mr. President. I want to show you what this means. This is the Southwest Museum with the collection. The Autry takes the collection and leaves us with this. This is exactly what exactly the Autry is doing. Yesterday, you took away the leverage that the community had to have the Autry obey the law and honor the merger. That's what your vote did. You did not support your council members, Mr. Weezer and Mr. Reyes, you failed to do that. You failed the community. You failed to save the Southwest Museum. Because, tell me, how are you gonna bring and make the Autry obey the law? How? Where is your leverage? That was our leverage. You should be ashamed for not supporting your council members. For seven years, we have worked very hard. Yesterday, instead of listen to the community, you listened to the lawyers, to the lobbyists, to the dozens, and to the ring kisters, that's why you listened to, not the community. You promised yesterday that you were gonna save the Southwest Museum. Well, let's get together, I want from every one of you, not hundreds, not thousands, I want millions, if you really committed to save the Southwest Museum, then do as you said.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Raul Vieramontes is our next speaker, and then Arnold Sacks will follow.
Can you pass this? Pardon? Yes, please.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Raul Vieramontes, I'm here representing the IBW Local 11, I'm a union electrical worker. I'm here to talk about the Farmer Stadium, I believe that it should be built, and I'm hoping that the council can do whatever they can to get this project going as soon as possible. We have over 1,000 IBW union members, electrical workers, out of work right now, and hotels, stadium, anything we can get going to put a lot of my brothers and sisters back to work, I would greatly appreciate that. And that's basically what I'm here for. I've been out of work for about 12 months, approximately, and the sooner I could get back to work and build some buildings for this city, I would gladly go back to work. And let's get this, let's get this city going, let's build some stuff, let's boost the economy up a little bit. Thank you, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, appreciate your words, and hang in there, we're working very hard. Arnold Sacks is our next speaker. After that will be Rick Nightingale in Van Nuys.
Thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sacks. Just a quick comment regarding the red light cameras and a quote in yesterday's newspapers. One of the council members said, "If you did something wrong, you should pay." How ridiculous is that idea? And let's talk about the stadium a little bit. Here's a novel announcement that was in the newspaper, Jan Perry had an idea. I hope she was standing, so she didn't get hurt. The CAO and the CALE both say the city is paying $48 million a year to cover the debt of the $485 million for the construction of the convention center that was open in 1971, and they still owe $485 million. What kind of accounting is involved in that routine? We never got that question settled. In an L.A. Times editorial from Sunday, they want to push this project forward, they say it'll create, create jobs, but remember, it's an economic zone, so, enterprise zone, so that the actual jobs that are created will be paid for through tax breaks, offering $49,000 per new employee. Also, they said it'll create rooms for hotels, but the, the L.A. Live got a waiver on the room tax, 14%, so $260 million in the next 20 years is going out the window. No mention of the city public safety costs that were incurred regarding Staples Center, oh yeah, that was free for 10 years. Now, two years ago, L.A. Live was in front of the Trade Commerce and Tourism Committee regarding advertising rights at the convention center, no mention of the stadium then. 18 months ago, they were here regarding advertising rights at L.A. Live, the Regal Theater, no mention of the stadium then. Now, we have a deadline, July 31st. What about the complex 30 miles east of here, the one where Rossky's got the state legislation to approve no EIR? What, how many jobs have been created at that complex so that you can balance one against the other?
Thank you, Mr. Sacks.
And no mention there, thank you.
Rick Nightingale is our next speaker in Van Nuys, after that we'll come back to Arminak Norjani, and back in chambers. Good morning, Mr. Nightingale.
Yeah, good morning. Yeah, I couldn't believe on, on Wednesday, on June 8th, that you, what you people did about this secure community. It's the same as slapping the face to everybody, that's the same as Sanctuary City, that you keep lying about the whole situation regarding that this Order 40 saves so many things and so forth, since 1978, I guess it was, or '79. I mean, for, for, all it asks is, when they, somebody gets arrested, that you take fingerprints and you send it to ICE and they get deported. My wife and I were just talking the other day regarding that you can't even go anywhere and be safe in this city. It's just outrageous that young adults can't be outside because there might be a shooting. Back in the late 60s and 70s, we never had that problem, until this Order 40 and all the illegals start coming over. Granted, there are a lot of them that are good, abiding people that are looking for a future, but the problem is they keep having more kids and they can't support them, and they want on the, the freebies, and then they both have to work, and then they got in the gangs, look at how many gangs there are here. I think it's 1,800 in the city of Los Angeles with 50,000 members? Give me a break, you're on the news, how many people, they keep saying, well, you're picking on the Hispanics and the blacks because, look at, they're the ones that are getting arrested and they're in jail? Well, who's committing the crimes? And you people keep supporting this bullshit? I cannot believe what you're doing. What do you, what's, what do you have to do to convince you people that you're wrong? Just because you want their vote? That's the whole reason, you want their vote to turn around and get your crap passed. And look what you're doing to this city, it's in the toilet. Thank you.
While people do have a First Amendment right to swear if it is of a non-sexual nature, we would ask you, Mr. Nightingale, to please try to refrain from using that language, even though you do have that right to do so. We have children who come and visit us who are in chambers, et cetera, so please, if you could use your discretion and try to address civilly the public as well as us. Thank you. Arminak Norjani is our next speaker. After that is Gary Parker in Van Nuys.
Respectable City Council members, GFL Angelinos, I'm, my name is Arminak Norjani, I'm a Texas Pan liberal. As a liberal Democrat and human rights advocate, I ran for the seat of California Assembly for next year election. I promise to raise taxes against wealthy individuals and against rich oil and gasoline selling corporation 50% in order to remedy budget deficit in California and create more jobs with government orders. In other words, we liberal take from rich and give to poor. I propose to create California satellite cell of own service for rural and forest area where, in territorial waters of California, where there's no, private cellular companies don't provide any cell of service. I will also craft state legislation to control car jams with live satellite surveillance in order to dispose those car jams on Californian freeways. I ask all progressive and liberal-minded Californian Petras, union members, to support my liberal candidacy with general donations for my election campaign by calling my cell phone number, 323-445-1600, contributing funds to support the liberal movement. I would appreciate if City of Los Angeles Council members buy my 17 oil and acrylic paintings that reflect Californian modern life in order to support Los Angeles based start. Actually, no art gallery wants to exhibit with new artists, because after recession, you know, most of us philanthropy is actually dead in Californian area. Also, I propose amnesty for law-abiding Californian ex-crimin, ex-felons, after five years of legitimate existence with proof of legal income so they could buy guns. Actually, I want to, to, casual legislation to, I want to ask Los Angeles City Council members to adopt, to adopt resolution to ban sales of narcotics, to ban sales of marijuana in the city of Los Angeles, because profiting from sales of narcotics is a federal offense, and the legal precedent of the city of Bell will repeat itself with the case of Los Angeles. And if City Council members want to understand things only the hard way, it will be their problem. The slogan American Revolution is to oust corrupt officials. I will petition federal authorities to indict Los Angeles City officials for sanctioning and protecting illegal marijuana sales.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Gary Parker in Van Nuys. Good morning.
Hello, my name is Gary Parker, I'm a L.A. resident, and I'm with IBW Local 11, and I agree with my brother from IBW who spoke a few minutes ago, we support the building of Farmer's Field, let's get jobs going in L.A. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate your comments. That will close our general public comment, we'll go now to items four and five, our commissioners, our appointments, if I can ask the commissioners to come forward for items number four and five. And we do come on down to the table, we have Ms. Freeman and Mr. Hernandez, and we do have cards from the public, so with Mr. Wesson's permission, I'll start with the cards, and then we will, from there, hear from our Chair of HCED. Thank you both for your willingness to serve, and I'd like to call Sandra Obando to be our first speaker. And again, to our speakers, it's comments to, not to our nominees, but to the council about our nominees, so Sandra Obando here? Sandra? Okay. After Ms. Obando will be Alma Salcido. Necesitas transacción?
Buenos dias a todos.
Good morning to all of you.
Yo vengo del Valle de San Fernando, mi nombre es Sandra Obando.
I come from the San Fernando Valley and my name is Sandra Obando.
Estoy aquí porque quiero pues que las personas que van a entrar como comisionados de la autoridad de la vivienda...
I'm here because I want to speak about whoever is going to take the position of commissioner for housing...
Ya que los van a nominar y van a hacer la votación.
As they're going to be nominated and you're going to vote.
Estuvimos hablando en el Comité de la Vivienda Pública.
At the Housing Committee, we were talking about this.
Y dimos nuestras recomendaciones.
We presented recommendations.
Para las personas que van a entrar al, al comisionados.
For whoever is going to take the position of commissioner.
Que tomen en cuenta los residentes.
They should take in consideration the residents.
Y que queremos un cambio.
We want change.
Un cambio positivo para nuestras comunidades.
We want a positive change for our community.
Yo tengo 25 años ayudando a mi comunidad.
I've been helping my community for 25 years.
Y todavía hasta ahorita no hemos visto ningún cambio.
Until now, we haven't seen any change.
Entonces, a nuestros nuevos comisionados que van a recomendar, les hemos dicho que queremos que nos tomen en cuenta como residentes.
To the nominated commissioners, we requested them to take us residents in consideration.
Y que las personas que van a nominar también para, para ser nominados como residentes.
And the residents that will be nominated.
Que tomen en cuenta las biografías de las personas que, que este, lo que han hecho en sus comunidades.
They, they should take in consideration the resume of these people and see whatever they have done in their communities.
Yo soy muy mejor disposición de trabajar con todos.
I'm willing to work with all of you.
Siempre y cuando tomen en cuenta los residentes.
As long as you take in consideration the residents.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Gracias. Alma Salcido, and then Rosa Roman.
Muy buenos dias, señor presidente del consejo.
Good morning, council members.
Momentito. Shh. If I could ask folks to please take their conversations out of chambers, out of respect for our public speakers, please, or to please keep them to a bare minimum. for our public speakers, please, or to please keep them to a bare minimum. Gracias. Por favor.
Buenos dias también a todos los concejales y público en general.
Good morning, council members and public in general.
Mi nombre es Alma Salcido. Soy organizador comunitario con Unión de Vecinos.
My name is Alma Salcido and I am a community organizer for.
Unión de vecinos.
Unión de vecinos.
Y estamos organizando Pico Aliso, Pico Gardens, ayudándoles también a Ramona Gardens.
We are organizing Pico Aliso and Pico Gardens and we are also helping Ramona Gardens.
Hace pocos dias tuvimos una audiencia con el, personas del gabinete del señor Villarrealosa.
Few days ago, we had a hearing with environmental staff from the mayor's office.
Y ahí en esa, en esa ocasión nosotros estábamos pidiendo se nos tomaran en cuenta para estas nuevas nominaciones a raíz de la renuncia de la señora María Del Angel.
That day, we were requesting to be taken in consideration due to these new nominations after.
¿Cómo se llama María Del Angel?
After Ms. María Del Angel left her position.
Residentes quieren ser tomados en cuenta. No estamos en desacuerdo con las personas que ellos están proponiendo.
The residents want to be taken in consideration. We are not against the nominees.
Pero otra vez, queremos ser tomados en cuenta. Queremos las cosas claras, queremos transparencia, no queremos nada debajo de las mesas.
We want to be taken in consideration. We want clarity, transparency, and we don't want nothing underneath the table.
Y no estamos en desacuerdo con ustedes. Otra vez les vuelvo a decir para que quede claro.
I want to repeat, we are not in disagreement. We just want, I just want to clarify this.
Queremos conocerlos y queremos también que se, proponemos que se pospongan para que también se toman en cuenta las nominaciones que nosotros estamos haciendo.
Yeah, we want to meet them and also we want you to take in consideration the nominations that we are presenting.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Muchas gracias. Thank you very much for your comments. Rosa Roman. And after that is Pam Walls.
Buenos dias a todos los aquí presentes.
Good morning to all of you.
Mi nombre es Rosa Roman y yo vengo del Valle de San Fernando.
My name is Rosa Roman and I come from the San Fernando Valley.
Como decían mis compañeras, no estamos en desacuerdo en la decisión que tomó el alcalde de nombrar estas personas.
As my friends mentioned before, we do not disagree with the nominations that the mayor did.
En el desacuerdo que estamos es en el proceso como lo hizo.
Yeah, they, whatever, we disagreed, however, we disagreed about the process that he used.
Porque nosotros hemos pedido audiencias con él. En muchas ocasiones hemos asistido a su oficina.
Because many times we went to his office and requested hearings.
Pidiéndole que nos tome en cuenta a todos los residentes y los líderes de las comunidades.
Requesting him to take in consideration all the residents and community leaders.
Porque queríamos ser partícipes de esta elección, pero no fue así.
We wanted to be part of this selection, but it didn't happen like that.
Espero que para los próximos comisionados que faltan, que ya tenemos una lista, les sometimos al alcalde, nos tome en cuenta.
I hope that for the next commissioners that they are going to nominate, they take us in consideration. We already submitted a list.
Por favor, señores, pongan atención a este tema.
Please pay attention to this issue.
Porque estamos siendo burladas por todos ustedes que no nos escuchan.
Yes, all of you are making fun of us because you are not paying attention, you are not listening to us.
Hemos venido aquí con usted mismo, señor Garcetti, y hemos estado en desacuerdos, pero continuamos aún igual.
We have come before Mr. Garcetti.
Queremos participación. Tenemos derecho como ciudadanos y como residentes.
And we have disagreed, but we want to participate. We want to be considered. We have rights as residents.
Gracias.
Gracias.
Pam Walls is our next speaker. After that is James Porter.
Hello, my name is Pamela Walls. I am a member of the Los Angeles Community Action Network. I am also a Hackla tenant. I'm appalled and disgusted at the low-down, dirty, backdoor politics of the mayor. On several meetings with the mayor's staff, we were told that the mayor would not be replacing commissioners until after the investigations. After the investigations, the very next day of resignations, the mayor made his nominations. The mayor needs to be held accountable for his deceptive behavior. The Housing Collective opinions and list of qualified candidates have been totally ignored. We need commissioners that respect the tenants of Los Angeles. I ask that there be, you know what, forget about this paper. You guys are not listening anyway. You know, the mayor needs to be held accountable because he has lied to his constituents. These are the people that have put him in office and he has totally ignored them. Hackla represents the tenants of Los Angeles. Mayor Villarrealosa is the mayor of Los Angeles. Where does it tell, where does it say that he is supposed to ignore those that have voted for him and put him in office? There is a seat available. I'm a qual, I'm qualified for that seat. I would like that seat because I am qualified. I am a tenant. I do live in low-income housing. I do understand tenants. I do have experience in housing. I do have a connection with the people. I understand the people. So that's why I'm qualified. I'm more than qualified. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walls. James Porter is our next speaker. After that is Steve Diaz.
Hi, my name is James Porter. I'm a tenant of Hackla. What I'm here today is because the resident didn't have an input on the decision of the selection. Like the lady here, Pam says, she's well qualified. We want people to be in it for a selection that understand tenants. We have nothing against you. But you, there was two selection now. Why can't the resident have an input on the next two seats that's available? Like she's, she's qualified. We need people who understand, who's been in that position, who knows the feeling and cares about tenants, not just landlord all the time, which they've been seeing to get in favors lately. Okay? So that's all I'm saying there and I want, that's it. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. Steve Diaz is our next speaker. After that is Elizabeth Blanis.
Good morning, City Council. My name is Steve Diaz and I am with LA Can, who is a part of the Right to Housing Collective. As many of you know, the Housing Authority has faced major political turmoil for over the last 15 years. Most recently, with the David Goesting reports, we have seen the need for a Housing Authority retransformation. We clearly, we clearly understand that the current, the current two appointees going before you today are going to be passed. We ask that as the process moves forward, tenants who have engaged and put forward the recommendations also be considered. As the commission is needing to have a reflective, different number of voices and a different number of opinions on the commission as well to ensure that the authority is competitive for federal housing money, as we know that money for the federal housing programs are going to be slim, slim and slim even more as time moves forward. We respectfully ask that you guys, as advocates of the community, have a more inclusive community process and that you respectfully, as well moving forward, include that in your decision-making. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz. Elizabeth Blanis is our last speaker on this, on the nominations.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Blaney. I'm with Unión de Vecinos. I'm a resident of Boyle Heights and I'm also a member of the LA Right to Housing Collective. The reason that I'm here today is, again, to reiterate other things that have been said is that since December of last year, residents from public housing, Section 8 tenants, as well as advocate organizations, have been meeting with the mayor's staff specifically on the issue of the Housing Authority commissioners. We've been asking that all of the commissioners be replaced because of all the investigations and the scandals that have happened and they've lost trust and confidence by the residents. During that entire process, we were continually told that no movement would happen. Two weeks ago, we were in a meeting with, again, with the mayor's staff and we asked point-blank, what is going to be happening about such-and-such commissioner and replacement? We were told, nothing is moving. The very next day, he announced his nominations. We were lied to. The process was not transparent and was not inclusive. What we're asking today is to not go forward with, with voting on the nominations. We have nothing against the current people who are nominated. It is a question of process. There needs to be transparency. There needs to be inclusiveness. Residents need to be involved in the process. Candidates who are here today in the room are interested also, especially to feel the, to fill the resident seat that is vacant and open and there's been no consideration for that. We are asking you not to go forward with that and we are also asking that you recommend to the mayor that he develop a transparent and inclusive process. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blaney. All right, that will close the public comments on this item. We have a number of speakers on the queue from the council next. Mr. Coretts is our first speaker.
Well, actually, I hadn't intended to speak, but based on the things that have come up, I would just ask, not necessarily of the appointees, but perhaps of, of mayor's staff if they're here, whether these discussions actually took place and whether a promise was given not to appoint people this quickly and, and whether, in fact, that they violated that promise. I don't know anything about this. This is the first I've heard about it, presumably true for many, if not all, the council, but if there's some way to know whether there's any truth behind it and what's going on, that would be appreciated.
Okay, we'll, we'll see if we can get somebody from the mayor's staff to answer that for you. Mr. Coretts, we'll hold your time and go to the next speaker in the meantime. Mr. Rosenau?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning.
Good morning.
I had the pleasure of spending some time with you, Dennis Hernandez, and one of the things I stressed was affordable housing in the 11th district. I strongly believe in it and I'm very proud of the project that we have developed for seniors, low-income seniors, and the empowerment concept. I asked you to meet with Power and you met with them this morning and I just asked one of their organizers, what was their energy like around you? And the most important thing he said to me is this commission will have the responsibility of picking the next executive director and that the commission is the oversight group, not the pawns of the person that comes in there, not, not some kind of a play, but, but somebody and some group that truly represent the overall view of the community and hold the executive director accountable. And if I could just ask you, Dennis, what process will you use to pick the executive director? And will you let Power participate in the process? And then apparently there's two more commissioners that should be legitimate people from, not people that are, yes, yes, men or women to somebody, but are advocates for the people in, in, in low-income and affordable and, and Section 8 type housing? Please tell us about yourself so we can feel comfortable in a public forum like this that you get that message.
Thank you very much, Councilman. I appreciate the opportunity to serve the, the city of Los Angeles on this commission. I hope that we can be open to all of the residents, their concerns. It, it, it's apparent, both from the speakers today and from all of the information that I've obtained thus far, that, that confidence is an issue. And so the first task that I think we have as commissioners is to ensure that, that the members of the public and specifically the residents of these developments have confidence in the process, that it's transparent, that it's open, and that we're available to hear their concerns, both at the meetings and whenever concerns arise. So openness is going to be a principal theme as we move forward. As to the, the, the issue of the, the next executive director, that has to be a principal focus for, for our commission going forward. This is a real opportunity. This is an opportunity to find the best and brightest in the country, a real thought leader, somebody who can be, have the, the Housing Authority for the city of Los Angeles be the model for the nation. So I think that has to be a principal concern for us, taking into account all of the concerns of the residents.
And when you take in all the concerns of the residents, will Power be part of your brain trusting, your reflective process and get their appreciation of whoever this candidate may be?
I had the pleasure of meeting with the Power representative just before this meeting today. We agreed to, to meet with them and the other representatives from the advocacy organizations and I'm happy to meet whenever and wherever to hear their concerns.
Great. And as I mentioned to you, and it's a public comment, I need more Section 8 vouchers. I have a homeless population in Venice that's significant. I really appreciate that the Housing Authority has given me 25 vouchers right now for my cars, to campers, to, to homes, but I'm going to need more as we develop our program. And I look forward to both of you assisting me in having Section 8 housing. Do I get a sense I'll get that support?
Absolutely. I, I am a resident in Westchester, so I, I, I know of what you speak. Some of those campers or those people need assistance and, and I'll do whatever I can to, to move that forward.
Great. I thank you very much. Ma'am, I, I just didn't get to meet you, so I apologize for not.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Reyes, followed by Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Council President. First of all, say welcome and thank you for your contribution to the city. Had the pleasure of meeting Mr. Hernandez as well as Ms. Freeman. And one of the conversations we were having spoke to the skillsets of what it takes to look at our assets, our properties, understanding opportunities around these facilities with the understanding that we want to improve access to affordable housing and create revenue for this authority, given all the cutbacks that we have in this current environment within government. So I just want to share with you, colleagues, this conversation and perhaps some feedback in terms of, if you don't mind, both of you talk about how you see your role. And I think there was a mention, Mr. Hernandez, and maybe you might elaborate on that, is perhaps considering coordination with Mr. Simmons and the staff, conducting meetings at the sites, creating a level of trust that we need to address. But if you could speak to the two points, both commissioners, candidates, if you, if you don't mind, please.
Thank you very much, Councilman Reyes, and thank you for the opportunity to address those issues. I, I do think that, again, public confidence is the first job won as, as we undertake this, this, this job. And meeting with residents, having meetings at the, at the development sites is, is important. I have suggested that to staff and, and I think they, they, they get it. Making sure that the meetings are posted, both on the website, at the development site.
Mr. Hernandez, may I, can you move the microphone closer to you because there's a lot of conversations in this chamber and we're not showing courtesy to our guests. And quite frankly, they are volunteering their hard time, hard-earned time with us. So please.
Mr. Reyes, Sergeant Arms, if you can quiet down the chambers and staff members who are having conversations, take them to the other room or behind the barrier. It's very disruptive. Sergeant Arms, please do that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What, as I was saying, I think the, the meeting should be available so, and everybody's in the developments and in the community should know when those meetings are held. They should be consistent. They should be regularly posted and, and we should reach out as much as possible to, to let the, the residents know that we hear them.
Ms. Freeman.
Thank you, Councilman Reyes. I too agree that transparency and opportunity for inclusion in conversations around the policies affecting the residents of the housing developments is very important. I look forward to serving the city and serving the entire city. And the issue of optimally allocating scarce resources is one that I deal with daily in my professional life, so I'm going to apply those skills in this setting to hopefully bring about a lot of positive change for the residents within the housing developments.
And just the last question, may I, Council President, is there is a, an assertion that there's a separation between who the authority members are versus the constituency who are the residents? Can you just point to what, how can you bring about that understanding, given the population base and the challenges residents have? What makes you able to understand what they're going through as authority members? Can you share something with us?
Sure, absolutely. I, I can draw from my, my experience. One of my first jobs as a young attorney was working for the city attorney's office doing cases in, in Skid Row. I've been down there. I, I can't say I understand the concerns, but I'd certainly seen the conditions there and, and at least from the perspective of a young attorney to. and at least from the perspective of a young attorney, too. I've spent time there. Right out of college, I worked for El Proyecto del Barrio in Pacoima, and worked directly with the community on issues like housing, employment. So I bring some real experience, firsthand experience. As far as the process is concerned, this is, I have said as a commissioner, I understand, I think I understand the relationship and the role of a commissioner, and hope I can help show some leadership, show some dynamic thought to the process and not just be a rubber stamp.
Ms. Freeman?
And for me, I recognize that I have an opportunity to meet and learn and really grow in this position, learning from a lot of the residents and the advocates on behalf of public and affordable housing here in the city of Los Angeles. I'm a resident, a lifelong resident. I care about the same issues that many people care about from a quality of life standpoint. And in my role as Director of Community Relations for Southern California Gas Company, it is my job to represent the company and the community, and to represent the community within the company. So I feel that I have, over the last 10 years in that capacity, gained an appreciation and a sensitivity to the needs particularly of the underserved.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Parks, followed by Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Freeman, I want to, first of all, thank you for making yourself available for this appointment. Maybe for those who are listening in the 8th district, you're a resident there, maybe you can talk a little bit about some of the issues we discussed on the phone about Section 8 housing and a variety of things that you might give them some insight as to your role and what your perceptions are on those issues.
Thank you, Councilman Parks. Yes, I'm a resident of the 8th district. I actually grew up in the 10th district and now live in the 8th district. And I enjoyed our conversation last week. I learned quite a great deal about your position on some of the issues affecting not only the homelessness population, but as well as people in need of affordable housing and other direct services related to housing and shelter. And I am going to look more closely into the issue of Section 8 vouchers to understand it more fully. As I understand it, the 8th district receives the largest number of Section 8 vouchers in the city, and so I'm looking forward to becoming an expert on that particular issue on behalf of the residents of the 8th district.
Okay. And then let me ask, if you could just give a little background on prior commissions so that people are aware that this is not your first time that you've been a city commissioner?
Sure. Well, I've had quite an interesting history within the city of Los Angeles. When I was a graduate school at USC, I actually worked as an intern on a charter commission during the time of charter reform, as well as I'm currently a part-time public policy professor at USC. So I've had a lot of opportunity to study the city of Los Angeles and to learn about some of the business and government issues that currently are before this council, as well as I served on the Quality and Productivity Commission for four years from 2005 to 2009.
Okay. Thank you very much. And again, thank you, and we look forward to working with you.
Mr. Weezer, followed by Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you. First, let me express my concern about the process that occurred. I, as a council member for the area that represents a number of housing projects, we had some, I've been working with local residents about some of the issues, and we were surprised to hear when the appointments were made. But nonetheless, being as we are here, what are your comments or thoughts on the, some of the issues that have been occurring in the Housing Authority? If both of you could answer that general question, please.
For myself, I, back to this issue of public confidence, I think we do need to address the issue of ethics. And then I have discussed with staff, doing a review of our ethics standards and ensuring that we are acting consistent with the law and holding ourselves out to a higher standard. Looking at our Brown Act policies, ensuring that we are holding meetings that are consistent with the Brown Act, and maybe even going beyond that, ensuring that there is notice, adequate notice, that the meetings are consistently available. And then again, just being available to the public, to let them know what we're doing and how we're doing, so that they have a full opportunity for input.
Kimberly?
And for me, I definitely believe in good governance and good leadership, and also full public participation. So I see those as being three key areas in terms of the forward look for this commission and our ability to serve the public adequately and effectively.
Thank you. We all know of all the issues that have been occurring, and certainly this organization is one that's ripe for reform. But I think more importantly is that we have a group of active residents throughout the city that want to be more involved, that want their voices heard, but we've been, they haven't been given their due place at the table. So I just ask that, as you move forward, to work with these residents, to hear their issues, and also to take into account that, as you move forward, a lot of the council offices are as well, are willing to work with you to make some of those reforms possible. In my district, whether it's Ramona Gardens, Estrella Courts, or Rose Hills, there's a lot of movement to improve the areas, but we, as we propose some of these improvements, they haven't taken into account necessarily the people who actually live there. So I think that's one thing that we've got to do as we move forward, to make sure they have a voice as we move forward. Finally, thank you for your service. I know it takes a lot of time, given both of your jobs and all the other responsibilities that go with it, but I do ask that you be proactive and diligent. This is an organization that needs a lot of attention, and you, the commissioners, along with the mayor and the council, ultimately responsible for how we move forward. But really, a lot of what we can do comes from the commission. So I'm here willing and ready to work with you, along with the local residents. Thank you.
Mr. Garcetti, followed by Mr. Alarcon is our final speaker.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you to both of our nominees, and not only for your service that you provided, the people of the city, but of this nation. I mean, looking at both of your resumes and knowing the work that you've done, we're, I think, extremely lucky to have folks who understand, I think, everyday working folks, and have the sort of experiences to be those translators between the people that we serve and the tenants that we have, and the policymakers in Washington and other places. To have somebody who has been counsel to Senator Kennedy, to have somebody who's worked on domestic violence issues, and who's worked on financial literacy issues, and to have both of you also, as Angelinos, really enmeshed in that for so many years, I want to thank you both for your service. This point has been covered quite a bit, but I wanted to even press it a little bit more. I've been working closely with our Secretary of Housing and Urban Development, Sean Donovan, who's a very talented, articulate, focused individual in the Obama administration. He was here in Los Angeles a couple weeks ago, and we sat down together, one-on-one, to discuss some of the issues around the Housing Authority and around homelessness. The only part of his budget that wasn't cut by this Congress was homelessness. And he said, "If we can't make this work in Los Angeles, we can't make it work anywhere. And I want you all to step up and to do your part, and if you do, we will step up from Washington and do our part." His impression of Hackla in the past has been that while there have been sympathetic folks at, let's say, the second-tier level who want to provide Section 8 vouchers to a lot of the work that we're trying to do to get people permanently off the street, that sometimes the very, very top leadership, now no longer there, didn't always want to or wanted to broker that. And he said, "We need to see that sort of transparency. We need to see that commitment." And quite frankly, for the efforts that we're doing in places like Hollywood right now, where we haven't just gone and counted everybody who's homeless, we've actually listened to them, written down their stories, ranked them in a vulnerability index from those who are closest to death on the streets, and then we're buying them one at a time off the streets, building new permanent supportive housing, spread sometimes around different apartment buildings, in individual apartment buildings, and looking at what we can do to get them off the street. We had a veteran who we just sat down with a couple weeks ago, who for 15 years, he said, "I was never homeless. I just didn't have a house." He was living in the Hollywood Hills for 15 years in a tent, and he's, because of health reasons, has finally come in. But if you can imagine after 15 years of living in the Hollywood Hills, what it's like for him to go through that transition, an amazing heroic person who had given himself to our country. I want to just press that point. I don't really have a question, but I want you to know how important it is to us, certainly me as a policymaker, that Hackla be at the center of solving homelessness in the city. And secondly, that we have a federal partner who really wants us to succeed. And once we appoint you, we don't really have much formal oversight over you. You're an independent body. So for the public that's here at this moment, when they want to see leverage, for us at this moment, I want to know that, and I feel intensely with both of you, knowing you and your resumes, that this will be an area of focus, but not just getting individual vouchers, which is great, and I share that with Mr. Rosenau, not just solving some of the folks, but having a systematic approach. We know how to do it. It is a resource issue now, and Hackla has to be at the center of doing that. And I know we've got good leadership in place now. I think we're going to have a great board with you, but just wanted to share that with you, because the eyes of Washington and of the city's homeless folks are watching you. Thank you.
Mr. Alarcon, are you willing to respond?
I was just going to say, thank you, and it really is our job to be good listeners, not just to the residents, but to this council. You really, you hear from your constituents. You know where the pockets of homelessness are. You know the individual stories. We need to be available and responsive to those issues.
Thank you. Mr. Alarcon, and then Mr. Corretts.
Councilmembers, I participated in the committee meeting where we had the opportunity to review these two candidates. I also met with both candidates in my office. And, you know, if the standard for making this decision was, you know, that the people should be good, that they should be concerned about our community and have good credentials, certainly these people would meet that criteria. That's, in fact, I think many of the board members who left, and even some that got caught up into the problems, meet that criteria. But that's not the criteria for us to judge here. We have a problem at Hackla, and that problem is a genuine division of trust between the residents and the management. But more importantly, there is serious controversies related to the policies that are emanating from Washington, D.C. In HUD, in particular, there's divisions of thinking on critical issues. And so the biggest problem we had with the previous board was that they were not independent thinkers. They did not do the extensive research on those kinds of policy issues, policy issues, issues like privatization of our housing authority, the issues like Section 8, whether we focus on Section 8 vouchers, or whether we build more housing units for our residents, issues like paying, using our era dollars to put in security cameras, again exhibiting distrust of our residents, versus putting that money into other improvements to the structures that certainly could use improvement. Those are the critical issues. These two commission members have committed that they will be independent thinkers. They're not just going to take the rubber stamp, they're not going to rubber stamp staff reports, they're not going to just take that and leave it at that. They've committed to meet with the residents, they've committed to meet with the advocates of the residents, particularly the Power organization, as Mr. Rosenau pointed out, and they've committed to be skeptical of the administration relative to its rubber-stamping of HUD policy. We are actually in conflict in our general policy orientation with some of the policies that have emanated out of the Bush HUD policies. And so we need independent thinkers, we need independent actors, people who do question the system, and at the same time, people who respect the residents and feel free to walk among them. As you know, our previous CEOs seem to have a problem just being with the residents. So I respect their concerns about not having the opportunity to participate in the selection process, but I also respect the executive privilege and the mayor's selection. I'm hopeful that the goodness that I sense in your hearts will transform the agency into a better-functioning agency, most importantly, by improving the quality of life for the residents that we care for, which is the primary purpose of Hackla. We don't want you to be bean counters. We recognize your need to be accountable financially, but we're taking care of people. We are human service first, and I know that that's your goal, and I wish you the best in your efforts to achieve that. Take care, and, but I don't, how can I say this? Your position that you are entering into is one of the most difficult positions, because we do have this controversy between the federal administration policy and even, it's not even clear what their desires are, but this whole issue of privatization and everything else makes it so difficult for you to manage your department. But I hope that you are activists in doing so, that you engage and make every effort to improve the quality of life for these residents, who deserve it as much as anybody in L.A. Good luck. You have my support. I commit to work with you to ensure that we are running a more democratic organization in a respectful of the residents' view, and work with you to improve the quality of life, particularly for those at San Fernando Gardens, which is in my district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alarcon. Mr. Corretts, our final speaker.
Yes, well, I guess we don't have a representative from the mayor that's able to speak on this issue.
Is there a representative from the mayor's office on this matter?
Apparently not.
Sheenun?
And I think you have two well-qualified folks here, so I'm not going to speak against their appointment. But as far as the process, I think we could ask that the mayor make a presentation, or the mayor's office, along with the future appointees to this position, and come back also at that time with a little bit of an explanation for the process and what went wrong. Or even better, if we could ask to request the mayor work with all the stakeholders that feel they got missed in this go-round for the next round of appointments.
Okay, we have one more speaker on this matter, Arnold Sachs. And that'll complete the speakers, and then we will be able to take the vote on you two candidates.
Good morning, Arnold Sachs. And thank you, Councilman Corretts. The proper action would have been to put this over. We just heard six council people talk about how great, how open, blah, 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 how great this process is going to be, yet the person nominating the commissioners tainted the whole process. You heard people on this side say, "Well, we were told this. Why not put the nomination over for a week until you hear from the mayor's office?" And then you get an answer to the question, "Well, was the process on the open and transparent side, or was the process like the public said?" We were told one thing, and they're doing exactly the opposite. Nope, let's go through with it, let's nominate, let's propose, let's do. I also went to the Los Angeles County Commission on Local Government, where they had the five-year program discussed regarding ending homelessness. Homelessness, this is the flyer that Hackla put out. This booklet probably cost, I don't know, $200,000 to print. That's keeping in touch with the homeless population by printing a booklet of this information while people are struggling to get vouchers for housing. I don't know. The last time I saw a booklet like this, MTA did their 2008 draft regional transportation plan. Probably cost as much money, a 30, 40-page booklet. You know what ended up happening to that? It went into the round receptacle because the draft 2008 transportation plan wasn't adopted. So we have open and transparent government. We have the mayor saying one thing, talking out one side of his mouth, doing exactly the opposite. We have a councilman, one councilman stood up and said, "I think the process has been tainted. What should we do? Let's go along with the march, because we don't want to have questions unanswered." A great job of leading from behind. Thank you very much.
All right, that matter is now before us for a vote. Colleagues, four and five. Mr. Clerk, four and five?
Yes, sir.
Colleagues on the matter, for the nominees, four and five. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Very good. Very good. Congratulations to you both.
Thank you very much.
And you'll go forthwith to get signed in. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, how about, we have the General Manager of Water and Power, Mr. Nichols here, patiently waiting. Fifteen to nineteen, if we could take those next, please. Mr. Parks?
On number fourteen, we call special. We got all of our information, so if there's no other issues, we can move fourteen.
On number fourteen?
Yes.
So, you ready to vote on fourteen, sir? Let's take number fourteen. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Fourteen's done. Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Nichols?
Pardon me, sir. For fourteen, there is amending motion, fourteen A. Motion, Weezer Alarcon.
I will see. Yeah, I think that's just a report back.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Weezer?
Yes. Our amending motion is a report back to city on the feasibility of getting a workforce center in Bow Heights. It's a report back.
So, for clarification, Mr. President, that was approved as amended with fourteen A.
All right, fourteen was approved as amended. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Parks, Mr. Weezer. And now we've got fifteen through nineteen. Mr. Nichols is at the table, and we will start with Mr. Weezer. Mr. Weezer, your button's pushed this time.
Yes, on item fourteen, that was to clarify.
No, we didn't. Now we're on fifteen to nineteen.
No, that was, I had pushed my button for item fourteen.
Okay, that's already taken care of. Thank you, sir. Okay, colleagues, fifteen to nineteen, Water and Power. Mr. Nichols is here. Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let me ask, Mr. Carets is the chair, do you want to start off? Mr. Carets, as a chair on this, do you want to start off on the medical issues that came out of personnel?
No.
Mr. Carets?
Oh, Mr. Parks, you raised the issue, I'll let you leave this one.
Mr. Parks?
Thank you.
On your time, back and forth.
All right, very good. Let me just say, and Mr. Zine, you may remember this, when you were the chair of Personnel last year, we had the discussion about medical costs and the issues that were confronting us, and we gave some very specific directions to the department, and it appears that at least one of them was followed, but others were not. Maybe you can start off by telling us what and why did we not follow the direction that was given at council and at committee.
Thank you, Councilman Parks. And I also have with me here, Wendy Gens from the City Attorney's Office that works with us on these matters, and Carolyn McKnight, who's our manager of Employee Health and Benefits. First, just as a point of context, the department had effort to go out, our efforts consistently, as I have before with council and several of the committees, have been trying to do everything that we can to reduce our costs in every angle that we can, and one of those areas where we did that was to put out for competitive bid, a portion of our health plan, that we have freedom to take action outside of specific meet-and-confer requirements under our memorandum of understanding with our unions. And through that, we sought to consolidate our non-Kaiser healthcare business, and that was Pacific Care, Blue Shield, and our health plan in Nevada. We went out with a request for that, received bids back to indeed consolidate that, and through that process, we've saved about $8.4 million in that plan. You had requested that we, I believe, Councilmember, you had requested that we look broadly as to what we can do. A number of our health benefits plans are, have specifically named suppliers actually in our memorandum of understanding. This goes back literally decades, in some cases, and that. And in those circumstances, to do, to make a change in those plans requires efforts to work with the unions on those. There were actually issues where we would be opening up our memorandum of understanding, our labor contracts, and in that regard, in order to be able to do something and move swiftly, I believe that's a difficult thing to undertake on a quick basis. Specifically, you asked some questions with regard to our dental plan, and our dental plan, while our Delta Dental is not named as a specific supplier or provider in memorandum of understanding, specifically in our IBW MOU, it provides for using Delta Dental as the benchmark against which any other plan would be measured. And so, the long and short of that is that we end up having to use Delta Dental as a cost, and whatever the costs are for providing service under that plan is used as a benchmark for any other plan. So, to the extent that any other plan is used, we have under the terms of that agreement that we will pay the amount equal to what would otherwise be paid under a Delta Dental plan. So, that's specifically identified in our memorandum of understanding, and as a result, we can't just unilaterally, we don't believe we can unilaterally go make a move on changing on that without working in agreement with the union under that MOU.
Let me just say, you weren't at the meeting, but during the discussion, the city attorney that sits in the Personnel Committee, who I believe is in charge of employee relations, commented that your MOUs, although they have the names of companies embedded, it did not prevent you from having those companies compete against each other. And so, and again, even though Delta Dental is the baseline, what I understand is the baseline on a level of service, and that it doesn't eliminate you from having competition to determine if those same levels of service are provided by someone else at a reduced cost. And the reason that these items came up is last year, your plans were running at about a 157% increase over the last 10 years. And we were asking, at what point is it cost prohibitive at a 10% rate? And I think one of the plans you bring us today has a 10% increase over last year. So, at what point is it cost prohibitive as relates to continuing at a 10% rate with no real competitive issues of reducing or holding the line on cost? And so, that's why we gave specific directions to your department and said, we'd like for you to meet with Personnel Department, who just went through the process, and the city attorney that was in the room that made that judgment, and to work these issues out before you came back this year. And it doesn't appear that any of those things were done, and we have the same issue today that we had in committee a year ago, where you're saying there's a prohibition in the MOU, which the city attorney in the meeting said you had more flexibility than what you are offering today.
You're right. I was not in the meeting, and I believe we could have attorney speak to this issue as well, if that's helpful, but it's my understanding that the context is that, are we prohibited from making a change? We're not prohibited from making a change, but we are prohibited from unilaterally making a change.
Well, I think there's some discussion on that, and that's why we asked you to resolve it before you went out to RFP again, because if you can save $8 million on one plan, but ignore any potential savings on the other four or five, it doesn't appear reasonable that you'd ignore the opportunity, at least to meet with Personnel Department and the city attorney that was in the room, that said you had latitude. To ignore both of those options and come today with another 10% increase doesn't appear reasonable, particularly in light that you're out in the community asking to buy into a rate increase in the near future. And so, that's what we wanted to be able to look at and say, if the city of LA's plan has gone just over 100% in 10 years, why is DWP's plan 157%, and now another 10% on a portion of it?
Well, in terms of the 10%, right now, I mean, generally speaking, of course, I think we're all experienced, both in government and private industry alike, are seeing increased, generally seeing increased expenses. We were fortunate, under the consolidation of plans together, that, of those areas where we did have ability to move unilaterally, that through that consolidation, we got some scale at such that were smaller plans, and got the number of potential participants or covered parties higher, that we believe is why we got some of the benefits that we received out of that. That doesn't necessarily mean that that's going to move forward, and I guess the other key point is our, one of our largest, one of our largest covered plans is our IBW plan for their Anthem, Blue Shield plan, and that is one that they actually administer separately, that's provided for under their MOU, and at least my understanding, by advice of council and my own plain reading of the agreement, is that we can't unilaterally move on that. And I guess, the context of things, one of the things that we're trying to do here, you're absolutely right, I'm, believe me, in going out in the many public meetings that we're having, I greatly appreciate the concern of our customers and having rate increases. It's for that reason that we've been looking to cut costs wherever we can. The one that we moved on is one where we could move immediately on, or swiftly on. Anything else that, my understanding of our situation, of our memorandum of understanding with our unions, is such that moving on that would be basically opening up that agreement, and then opening up that agreement on just the issue with respect to healthcare seems like a, I don't want to negotiate a labor agreement here in front of council, but that's a concern that we have.
But those are the concerns we asked you to resolve over this last year, because that was what was articulated at the committee, that these are all your concerns, and the city attorney, who's in charge of employee relations for the entire city, within the city attorney's office, said that is not so. And we said, would you get with them and resolve those issues before we come back? And so, you're bringing us the same concerns this year, a year later, and then when you say, you know, everybody's costs are going up, admittedly, the city of LA's costs are over 100% for 10 years. There's no reason, with one-third the employees, that the DWP would be 157 and growing. And yet Mercer's sitting next to your employees, and I wonder how much help they're giving. I can get you 157% increase over 10 years, and I don't know anything about insurance. If you're hiring a consultant to keep your costs down, and they're giving you a franchise and say, just pay these bills, I don't know what value they've been, particularly when we use Mercer in the city, and they kept it down at 100%. So, that's what we've asked to do, is find ways to reduce it. And even though you mentioned that one union is administering the plan, the problem with it, as we brought up in the committee, was you're still paying the fee. So, they may administer it, but you have some control over what you choose to pay.
Well, actually, under the terms of, terms of the MOU, once that provision has been established, and until such time that we renegotiate the labor agreement, I don't believe we have those degrees of freedom to make those actions.
Let me just read something out of documents you just gave me. You say in here, the department will meet with local 18 prior to negotiation new agreements with health insurance carrier. Then it goes on to say, in conformance with DWP Board Resolution 985 on June 29, 1972, as amended, any increased cost due to negotiated improvements in benefits shall be borne solely by the employee. Is that in effect?
That is my understanding. That's the extent that you're improving benefits. Now, there's, one thing is improving benefits, the fact that the cost for providing the same benefits might go higher, doesn't necessarily mean that's not an improvement in benefits. Unfortunately, we pay, we end up paying a higher cost for the same benefits as insurance costs in general have been going up.
Okay. Let me just say, because there's so many things in the sense of all these plans, and we're at a last date, because I think you got to get them approved by the 30th. Is that right?
Correct.
Mr. Parks, you're at nine minutes, six seconds.
Okay. All right, I'll push my button again, because I had a motion I was going to move forward on. So, I'll push my button.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Garcia is going to...
Point of order?
Mrs. Garcia's going to take over the chair. I have a question.
Point of order?
I'd like to recognize Dennis Pizin at this point. Yes, point of order, Mr. Alarcon?
On item 14, I apologize, I was too, I didn't realize we were voting so quickly, but there was an amendment that was needed to change the effective date, and...
Okay, after this, let's, we'll reconsider it? Okay, no problem. Mr. Zine?
All right, thank you. Mr. Nichols? I know a lot of these things happened before you got there, as the General Manager of Water and Power, so, following up on what Mr. Parks started with, can you explain why did not go out to bid for some of the benefits? Since there was opportunity, why they never went out to bid?
Well, actually, I guess my view is there wasn't opportunity. I think we've taken action where there is opportunity. In those circumstances, where existing, either existing providers, or the benchmark for determining the payment that we make, in the circumstances where other providers can come in, that changing those providers out, when they're named and established in an MOU, is a matter that requires us going back and effectively negotiating those arrangements with our unions.
But some of them, did you have an opportunity? Was there an open clause, we had an opportunity to go out to bid?
We had, and I can have Ms. McKnight provide you a little bit more color on this, but we had the ability for our, for that which we went out with our request for proposal, for consolidating our non-Kaiser business, because Kaiser is our benchmark entity that's named in our agreement, to include Pacific Care, look at Pacific Care, Blue Shield, and our health plan in Nevada. Those were areas, ones that we could move on and go out and solicit bids, and indeed we did, and we're pleased by consolidating those, basically, by bringing those together and offering up as just one plan instead of multiple plans.
But you did go out to bid where you could.
We did where we could, and we received an $8.4 million benefit in so doing.
Okay, and then the growing cost of healthcare, which we know is affecting people everywhere, how are they being contained, if they are being contained?
Well, we're, you know, wherever we can, wherever we have the ability to go out and take action on them, we are taking action on them. The remaining items, and the remaining, both basic healthcare and our dental plans, are such that we believe, and I'm advised, that we can't make moves on those other ones without opening up our union contracts. And I guess our view, our view is opening up just a piece of a union contract, for one, it takes two to tango.
Right.
And then, secondly, the issue is whether it makes good sense to address simply that item alone, even if you were able to have a negotiation on that. When there are, you know, when the contracts expire, that is, our MOUs with our unions expire, and we anticipate we'll be addressing a number of issues as opposed to just trying to negotiate one piece.
So, the opportunity hasn't been there for all those issues?
That is correct.
Okay. The city's asking and negotiating with its employees to contribute more toward healthcare. Is Water and Power looking into it at all? More contribution from the employees, as we're doing with other employee groups?
Well, as we roll forward and these contracts expire, we'll be looking at all options and be looking at all types of costs that we can, obviously, in collaboration with the ERC, and working through the directions that we get through that.
Okay, and the final question I have, the public thinks that every time the water rates go up, and I addressed a group in the valley just a couple nights ago, that water rates, the power rates, and the different organizations that are reviewing, they think the rates go up because of the cost for the employee groups, healthcare, salaries, et cetera. I don't know if that's accurate or not, but how do we address the fact that you need infrastructure that has to be refurbished and improved versus the cost for salaries and benefits, and how that impacts the rate to the consumer?
Well, in fact, just those very issues are issues that we're discussing in our public workshops on there. Are there some costs associated with labor and benefits that attribute somewhat to those increases? Yes, they are. They are not a major component by any means of those costs, but they are a contributor to some of those. The more significant contributors to our, both our water and our power rate adjustments are the many regulatory mandates that require us to make some massive capital improvements to our systems, as well as working on some continued efforts to try to replace our pipe on the water side and to improve... our pipe on the water side and to improve and replace our aging, uh, electric distribution system as well. Those are, those are the big contributors right now to those adjustments.
And will the ratepayer advocate, once that position's in place, will they have any say over any of those rates?
Well, I guess it depends on what we say on say. They will have an independent review and will provide all the information that we have that, that gives them the ability to independently look at our costs, our rates, our finances, and the same type of things that we're reviewing before we ever come, uh, come before council to, uh, to, uh, to review those, review those rates. They will then provide advice on, on, on that, which presumably, obviously, both our, our Board of Commissioners can, can take into consideration, as well as city council take into consideration. They are, they don't actually, my understanding, I'm not an attorney, but my understanding is they don't vote on the, the ratepayer advocate doesn't actually vote on the matter. They, they review and advise.
Independent evaluation and analysis to find if it's justified.
Correct. And that would be, you know, in addition to presumably the, the already ongoing independent review that's being done by, by city councils, independent consultant that's in the process of reviewing our, our, our finances and rate, rates at this time.
Okay, good. Thank you, Mr. Pizan. Mr. Parks?
Thank you. Let me just do, uh, Mr. Nichols, uh, if you talk to your staff, this may sound very familiar, but I'm going to ask that we do a motion, uh, in behalf of these five items. Much of it is what we asked to do last year, but that, uh, we direct, can we, can we direct it, we have to request?
It depends who it's to.
To the, to, we're sending it to the, uh, the DWP Commission and General Manager.
I think you can direct.
Okay. We direct the, uh, DWP Commission and General Manager to model the city's program of RFI to evaluate, uh, the healthcare and dental care, uh, issues that are in the, uh, industry prior to going out to an RFP for the 2012 selection of, uh, care, care providers. Uh, that we asked you, direct you to meet with the city attorney in charge of the, um, Employee Relations in the City Attorney's Office, along with the General Manager of the Personnel Department, to resolve the employee relations issues regarding embedded names of carriers versus competitive bidding in the process. Uh, also that we asked you to meet with the city attorney, Employee Relations, uh, head and the General Manager of Personnel Department to resolve the issue of administration of healthcare versus the department's responsibility and funding of that healthcare. Uh, we also asked that the General Manager and DWP reevaluate their current insurance administrator, Mercer, uh, as it relates to providing the best advice for maintaining and reducing cost of the plans. Uh, the next one that we asked, the General Manager and, and the, uh, Commission to, uh, work with the Personnel Department in modeling the current selection and RFP process for medical and dental that's used in the city. And then finally, that we asked the General Manager and the Board to model the current city's program on freezing of increases in healthcare benefits for retirees and active members, uh, we, being required to contribute to their future retiree healthcare. So those are, most of them are issues that we asked from last year. Some of them are new from this year's progress by the city and we hope that by the time we're here in 2012, that we'll have a better result on healthcare with DWP.
Thank you, sir.
Will we get a second?
Second.
All righty. We've got, uh, before us, the items on numbers 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19. Um, then other speakers on the queue and as amended, if there's no objection, those will be included. Let's go ahead and take a vote on this item. Thank you for your time, Mr. Nichols, and let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Those are approved. Thank you. Appreciate you being here. Um, and if we can reconsider item number 14, please, for Mr. Alarcon? Oh, we already included, we made the amendment? Okay, we made the technical correction on 14. Fourth with, all right, Mr. Alarcon, without objection, we'll send 14 forthwith. Uh, next item, please. Oh, yes, Mr. Parks?
Let me, uh, see if we can save some time. On item 37, did we have that, uh, referred to Budget and Finance so that we could evaluate the financial impact of this entire package dealing with photo red light?
Is there any objection to continuing item 37? The folks, just so, I don't want anybody to say afterwards that they weren't listening.
You want to send it?
Um, yes, I have no problem with it. I just want to make sure, Mr. Gracorian and Mr. Smith, is, Mr. Parks is asked to send item 37 to Budget and Finance Committee to look at the financials of it?
Second for me.
Yep. That's the red light, uh, photo cameras.
No.
Okay. Is there any objection to that? If, if not, we will refer that to Budget and Finance. Okay, uh, next item, please. That brings us to item one, called Special for Cards. Okay, um, item one, and John Walsh, if you'd like to come forward on item one. Mr. Walsh will be followed by Wayne Spindler.
John Walsh, blogging at Hollywood Highlands, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S dot org, 100,000 successful server requests a month. Email us at HollywoodDMS, the E-M-S, at gmail dot com. Or you can Twitter us at Mickey Jackson or Facebook, Facebook us at Mickey Jackson, M-I-K-I. This concerns the Kling Street Radford Avenue lighting district. We are 100% in favor of this. It's in the valley and we are also happy to be here at the Conan O'Brien Square, right down the corner, which you are going to name after Conan O'Brien. Thank you.
Wayne Spindler is our next speaker. Mr. Spindler here? Okay, I think he is left. We'll close the public hearing. Let's take a vote on item number one. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Uh, next item, please. Mr. President, that brings us to item 20, called Special for Cards. Uh, item number 20, John Walsh, if you'd like to come forward again. Okay, Mr. Walsh passes on his card for item 20. We'll close the public hearing. And any members wishing to be heard on 20? If not, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Uh, next, Mr. Smith, we have item 21 next. Did you want to take it in a different order?
We'll take 23 first and then 21.
23, okay. We do have cards. Let's take up item 23. Arnold Sachs, if you'd like to come forward on item 23.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Arnold Sachs. I just held this item because I like the way it refers to the five-year plan, which is important because the public needs to realize that, like orbits, there are different plans, different lengths of plans. There's a five-year plan here, there's a 10-year plan there. There's a DW plan for infrastructure, there's a redevelopment plan for downtown LA, there's a redevelopment plan for LA Live. It's not just wake up this morning and, oh yeah, by the way, the decisions being made, the processes being considered are part of plans. Consider that when you go and talk to your council people about having proper representation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sachs. That will close our public comment on 23. And Mr. Smith?
President, and it's a pleasure to bring to you the culmination of a long, long career of trying to find alternatives to landfills. I was elected on a platform of trying to find solutions to landfilling. Mr. Alarcon was a champion of that and was at the same landfill out in the San Fernando Valley. Mr. Kardnis, who is in, how many closed landfills in your district, Tony?
35.
35 plus landfills. These gentlemen understand what I'm saying when I say to you what I've said for a long time, and that is the 200-year-old practice in America of digging a hole in the ground, throwing your trash, and, and calling that trash disposal is a stupid idea. We came forward to this council and many people said, "If you're not going to do that, bring us a better plan." And we did that in 2006 with what was called Renew LA. Renew LA was a 400-plus-page document, very boring. Uh, I know Mr. Garcetti read it, uh, but no one else ever read it, I think except for Sanitation Bureau.
You hit the bestseller list of council members.
Bestseller. It was the hottest-selling item in this building for, like my book, it was, it's my book, hottest-selling book in 90012. It was a, a plan to get us out of landfilling with alternatives, ideas that will expand our, our recycling and other programs, I'll talk about in a moment, or rather, it was a plan that was based on technology, based on science, and more importantly, it was a plan based with 13 motions, which I commend my council members and colleagues for passing it. At the heart of it is the concept of zero waste, that we must do everything we can to reduce our waste stream, to get rid of it, to no longer depend on landfills as the resource for our trash in Los Angeles. Over the past five years, we've expanded our recycling, uh, infrastructure, we've created economic incentives and jobs. Uh, at the heart of it is the state-of-the-art technologies, which we're going to talk about in item 21. And I'm proud to say that today, the city of Los Angeles sits at a 69% diversion rate without conversion technologies, the highest in America of any large city. We recently added plastic bags, film plastics, polystyrene, styrofoam, hangers, milk and juice cartons to our recycling bins. Uh, we are creating markets for those commodities. We're the first city in America to make a deal with a company to take styrofoam and actually create that market for our styrofoam. More importantly, we brought forward a program to enter into multifamily sector where we now have 75% of the apartment buildings in the city of Los Angeles and a voluntary program with our waste haulers to reduce the trash going to our landfills. We introduced to LA Unified School District the idea of blue bins. When I was elected, on seven campuses out of their 1,000 campuses, they had recycling. Seven out of 1,000 had recycling. Today, that number is 648 campuses in LA Unified now recycle. Again, at the heart of it was zero waste. We took to the people of Los Angeles the plan and said, "You are the people of LA, what should we do to be reducing our trash?" And went forward with a SWRPP plan, Solid Waste Integrated Resource Plan, and over a period of almost two years, met with thousands of citizens of Los Angeles. I was shocked and dismayed when I came to the final culmination at the LA Convention Center where 600 citizens showed up on a Saturday morning to talk about the final waste plan. I don't think any city in America's ever accomplished anything like that. And SWRPP was a great outreach plan and one thing was very consistent. They wanted more recycling, they wanted to know why we were not doing these alternative technologies, why we were, as Americans, so far behind the rest of the world. And that is what we'll be talking again shortly. We also instituted a construction and demolition plan, a public-private partnership for special materials, including hazardous waste, U-waste, universal waste, electronic waste, and other materials. We now have them available, where you can drop some of these off at our safe centers. We have six, we're in construction to build our seventh. And citizens of LA now don't have to wait for them to come to the neighborhood to pick up those, they can go on any weekend and drop off those dangerous materials at our safe centers. We have 1,000 restaurants participating in our food waste recycling program, in our environmental purchasing program where the city of LA puts up environmentally sensitive and reusable materials as its first choice for purchasing rather than look at the simple dollar cost alone. We use it in our city billings, you have it in your offices, recycling is now the way of life in our cities. We have negotiated with many of our universities for recycling programs there, which years ago, none of them had recycling programs. And we've set forth in the recycling, in the Renew Plan, the proponent idea of building seven new facilities in the Los Angeles area within the next 20 years to take conversion technologies that are used widely in Europe, bring them to America, and find a better way to deal with our trash. What we found in our trips abroad and looking at these alternative technologies, and we'll talk in much more detail in a moment, is that there are better ways to utilize trash than just dumping it in the landfills that we currently do. With Mr. Reyes's leadership, we went through the land use process and, and went to Plum and instead of just using M3 properties, we widened it with a new conditional use program that widens the opportunity without restricting M3, which generally are environmentally, uh, justice areas that we don't want to be putting them necessarily in. And with his leadership, we accomplished that. The important part is, since 2006, the adoption of our plan, we have diverted 3.6 million tons, uh, what we normally used to landfill down to 2.96 million tons this last year, a reduction of 690,000 tons of trash a year that we're going to landfills that are no longer going to landfills. It is a great success story we should all be very proud of. Uh, in the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions and carbon equivalent, of that will be 3.2 million metric tons a year when we finalize the program, equivalent of 595,000 less cars on the road emissions. Uh, my thanks to my colleagues, I mentioned also Mr. Reyes, Ms. Perry was very instrumental with AQMD in her committee here, Mr. LaBonde and, uh, Mr. Parks and Mr. Kardnis were on the early Renew LA committees. Uh, through their very hard work, we accomplished a lot of things, the SWAT orange I mentioned. The Board of Public Works did an extraordinary job of overseeing this for the last couple of years. Uh, they have been very supportive, making sure that the Board of Bureau Sanitation did all these things. But most importantly, we had a Bureau Sanitation that not only agreed to do this, but embraced it and said, "We, as a city, can do better, we can lead, and we are now the leaders in the United States of America because of the work of the, the Board of Public Works and the Bureau Sanitation." And my, my deep and, and forever indebtedness to Enrique and Rita Robinson before him and all the staff of the Bureau Sanitation, particularly the Recycling Division, Solid, Solids Division, and Financial Divisions. Uh, with that, ladies and gentlemen, we present to you the five-year summary, the first five years of our 20-year plan to reduce our dependence on landfills, to find a better way to deal with waste in Los Angeles that is environmental, that is sustainable, and is something you all should be very proud of when you talk to your citizens, that we are in fact the leaders in the United States of America in diversion and recycling and reuse. And with that, I'll be happy to take any questions if there are any.
Thank you. Mr. Alarcon?
Council members, I, I too want to, uh, applaud Councilman Smith for his leadership in, uh, developing the Renew LA report. Uh, there are, it, it covers everything, uh, that you could possibly consider and, uh, and, uh, and it does so in a way that, that, um, gives us an opportunity to improve how we handle our waste stream, which is our, one of the most critical problems facing Los Angeles in all seriousness. Uh, but it's one of the most challenging tasks, particularly given statutory requirements and, uh, the challenge to move toward renewable energy, everything that comes together with our waste system, not to mention the community's concerns about having these systems in their backyard. Uh, the one, uh, question I have regarding this report, we're just going to receive and file this report, is that correct? We're going to note and file it. Uh, the one concern I have is with regard to alternative technologies, does, does, I'm trying to discern whether or not it includes burning trash. And it's, it's very difficult to, to see in here, and since this was waived out of the Renew LA Committee and wa, and it did not go to Public Works, we really haven't had a chance to figure out where that piece is, because it's the most controversial piece and it's something that I think needs to be fully vetted. Is, is that in this report? No, I, I recognize that's 21, but is it in the Renew LA report?
Sure, yeah, and the way we addressed it in the Renew LA report was that we wanted to look at conversion technologies and the most modern technologies. There is a distinction between burning of trash and what you will see in the proposals that are coming forth. Uh, one... One is, the modern technologies capture NOx and other emissions in a way that none of those technologies had before. Secondly, many of the options use anaerobic digestion, gasification, and other alternatives that don't create or use fire in a traditional sense. If you go to the SURF facility, they dump the trash in a big facility and burn it.
You know, Mr. Smith, I really don't want you to explain the technology. I'm just concerned that the council be aware that this is a very controversial issue
Yes.
in the communities where it resides.
Yes.
And depending on where it goes, you know, depending on whichever council member might be the recipient of this opportunity, that the community may look very negatively towards it.
And I understand that, and the argument we've always had, and I will side with you on that, is the old technologies of the 1980s are not what we're talking about. The conversion technologies today, which are widely used in Europe, do not emit gases. They do not have the problems of burning trash that those facilities had. They utilize the modern technologies that capture that and do not create those problems.
Well, I'm certain the technologies—
And that's what we'll come back—
I'm certain the technologies are improved from what they were when we had the debate, when the council had the debate back in the 80s. But nevertheless, I just wanted to point out that it is a very controversial issue, and wherever the contracts might land could create a tremendous workload for the council member who receives that.
But that's a later decision.
Yeah, I'll hold that comment. I have no problem with receiving and filing this. I do want to, again, commend Mr. Smith for his career of dedication to this issue. And again, it is one of the most challenging that we have in the city of Los Angeles.
Thank you. We have seven members on the queue, starting with Councilmember Cardenas, then Mr. Rosenthal, Ms. Perry, myself, and Mr. Reyes, Mr. Labonge, and Mr. Parks.
I'm basically going to speak on Item 23, but not on Item 21, although I do want to point out that Councilmember Alarcon brings up a good point. Just the issue of trash in general is an extremely controversial issue, and it's something that most politicians, most elected officials, don't even want to touch, get near, or actually tackle. I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank Councilmember Smith for the tremendous job and the commitment he's made to not look out for his political career, but to look out for the future of Los Angeles, and to also allow us to have the debates that we've had over the last eight years during your tenure here, Councilmember Smith, that have been focused, they have been scientific, they have been honest, they have been the kind of policymaking that actually I wish we would do on every single instance, although we're not afforded that in every case. But you did take it to the nth degree, and I just wanted to thank you for that. This is a very, very important issue, controversial or not, and this is an issue that unfortunately, whenever we talk about this kind of technology, we always had to go to other parts of the world to go experience what they've already been doing that we have not been doing here. And as a result of not doing the right thing, we've just been filling big gaping holes in the ground for far too long, which we all know is not good for the environment. It's not a smart thing to do. And the sad thing is, that technology is old as the caveman days. And it's really important for us to understand that this did not come about because it just happened. This came about, and where we are at today is a milestone for our city, and also it's a milestone for our country. The second-largest city in the country is now taking a giant step forward that is going to set the pace for the rest of the country. And I'm very happy for my children, and hopefully I'll be blessed with grandchildren, and so on and so forth. I'm very happy for them as well, because this one issue that we're covering here on Item 23 and Item 21 is a major, major deal. And I also want to point out that the council has 13 out of 15 members are Democrats. And I just want to congratulate you, Republican Councilmember Smith, that you picked the one issue that you can get unanimous support. As a Republican, you picked the one issue—
Wait a second. Mr. Smith's a Republican?
Oh, I'm sorry. He's from USC, so I just assumed.
Whoa!
So—
He's out of the word.
So my point is, on my last 15 seconds, is I just would like to say it was not an easy issue to tackle. It could have been any one of us that could have taken this on, and Councilmember Smith took it on forthrightly. He took it on very seriously, and he took it on in the way that elected officials should take on issues. Congratulations.
Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you, Mr. President. And of course, I've had the distinct honor and privilege of being a seatmate of Mr. Smith. And also, I was chair of Public Works when I first joined this group with Mr. Smith, who was the wise sage of the group, and the focus on this five-year plan was enthusiastically endorsed and appreciated by me. I'd like the Bureau of Sanitation to come up real quickly to the desk. Folks, one of my joys in being in the government is getting to meet people that are in it and have experience in it and relationships in it. We would not have had a five-year plan put together if we didn't have the experience and the depth that Mr. Smith brought to the picture. And when he did the world trip and went around and figured out what makes more sense, he came back with more ideas and more suggestions. But he understood the bureaucracy because he was part of a staff of an elected for many years. And with that background, when he became an elected, he knew where the buttons were and who the people were and how to make things happen, which is the experience factor that's been invaluable, frankly, for me, who sort of a freshman was then and somewhat of a freshman now, to get that advice and support. Could you give us a quick sensing of how this all went? Please introduce yourself, too.
Thank you, Councilmember Rosenthal. Enrique Zaldivar, Director of the Bureau of Sanitation. And we want to have this opportunity as well to express publicly our appreciation for Councilmember Smith's leadership. We had a chance a couple of weeks ago to have a private session in which we expressed that same gratitude and that same sense of appreciation for what he brought to the city as a whole and to us as a department with regards to the vision and the direction of solid waste management, as both Councilmember Alarcon and Councilmember Cardenas already articulated. He spent an awful lot of time brainstorming with us. We were privileged to have had that kind of attention on his part, and privileged to have gone the vision that he brought forward in the Renew LA plan that is multifaceted, as he already explained, and went over the many components and elements that are included in the Renew LA plan, well diversified. You know, this has set and will set the city on a very good direction for the next generation or more than one generation in the future. We have been very pleased and fortunate to have had his visionary leadership. Thank you, Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. Ms. Perry is our next speaker.
I just wanted to say a public thank you to Mr. Smith. And this will be one of your many legacies, and you've changed the way that we manage our waste with your hard work and your diligence and your focus. And not only, I think, do you have my gratitude, but those, the thousands, hundreds of thousands of people whose lives that you've impacted. And this doesn't seem sufficient in terms of, you know, sending you off, but I know you don't like a lot of brouhaha, so I'll just say thank you and bye-bye.
Thank you very much. I will recognize myself and hand the chair over to Mr. Rosenthal.
I'm asked to sit up here for a second. Don't get any ideas. I'm not getting any. Okay. Next speaker on the queue is Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And thank you, Greg, for some new reading material. I had finished not only the first report, but your book as well, so I'm glad to have a little bit more reading material for when I get home and I'm feeling like I can't sleep. That said, the Renew LA milestone is really quite significant. I think so much of what we need to do as council members is communicate this even more. Like, how many people know you can take your batteries to any library here? I know a bunch of people over there know that, but how many people out there knew that, or to a Jiffy Lube or to a Target? How many people know that right now with the second pilot, I know that you can take your mattresses to get them refurbished, recycled? To look at the change of behavior in our schools, in our companies, in our multifamily recycling, it's a real significant accomplishment. But even more so, I mean, I think Mr. Smith came to this in the best of ways of what council members do, which is that there's something local that makes you suddenly look at it. And he could have just said, "Look, we have a problem with landfills closest to my district and in my district," and stopped there. But he traveled the country, he traveled the world, he brought together the best minds, and he wrote what I still think is the finest report that we've seen from a council member. So just wanted to congratulate you today. And the last note I would just say to you, Mr. Smith, is, you know, our job—you have taught us—is not to write personal legacies, it's to actually solve the problems that people have. Our job here as council members is not to enforce ideologies, it is to make sure that people's quality of life improves. And for anybody who's cynical out there about what we do in here, and for anybody who believes for a moment that, you know, you look at the landscape of American politics and all you see is people yelling at each other because of an initial after their names, you come in here in the city council, yes, even as a minority, being a Republican, but we shed that we're Democrats and Republicans. And Democrats are allowed to tackle budgets and make sure that we have good fiscal conservatism, and Republicans are allowed to work on environmental issues. And nobody holds us back from those things that all representatives should do, that they should be nonpartisan, that we should solve problems, that we should engage in ways that recognize that it's not one person coming in here changing the world, it's one person helping a lot of people change the world. And to your staff and to you, you've done a remarkable job, so congratulations. And I hope the people out there will read this and will read the original report. The only way we change the city is not by the city delivering vetter on this stuff, that's a piece of it, but it's by every single person deciding, "I'm not going to throw those batteries into the black bin," deciding, "I am going to compost at home and figure out how to do that." I can be the change that I want to see, and you certainly inspired me to do that, Mr. Smith, and congratulations on this and all your work.
Thank you very much. Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President Rosenthal. I wanted to just stand and acknowledge and thank Councilmember Smith for his very hard work. I was reflecting back on what his presence, your presence, has meant to the city, and I look at some fundamental, basic, common sense accomplishments that affect millions: the gas shut-off valve for the earthquake, getting that conference together, bringing a focal point from many different perspectives, interest groups, the different sectors of our economy, to actually focus on issues that speak to how we are a better city. So it came from a very pragmatic place, and as we look at this Renew LA, this is about our grandchildren. This is about how we're going to survive the increase in population growth, not only from birth rates, but from migration, from points mid-America, the East Coast, throughout the world, as they migrate here. Where will people live? How will they live? How we deal with our trash? These are fundamental issues to how a city can function, and Councilman Greg Smith has been part of that. I recall, I guess 20 years ago, a staff person with Councilman Burnson, Chief of Staff, seeing many of the issues in the land use categories and how they were addressed, and seeing how this was developed, hard lessons learned about issues of equity. True, the city has a history of being a tale of two cities, but under Greg Smith's leadership, we saw a notion of equity. We saw a notion of what is fair and started addressing that imbalance. And for that, I thank him. Now, I know at the very beginning, we had it a little rough, but I think it was just passion speaking to what we believed was right for our point of view as one city. And that is a perspective that we all need to cherish as an institution. So for that, Greg, I want to say thank you for your hard work. It's been a pleasure working throughout these challenging issues, and I'm going to miss that 14-1 vote as we go through the process, but you're always there for that, and I appreciate that. Got you covered all right. Okay. Hope it's not a valley thing, man. But thank you so much, Greg. I appreciate it. It's been an honor working with you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Labonge.
Mr. Smith, I want to thank you. In 60 years of what Los Angeles was, and I know in 1958, I believe it was, they said, "Stop burning trash in backyards because of the smog that affected." Home burning was discontinued. I remember as a child doing that, and we stopped doing it. And then they had Can Box Day and Trash Day, and then Mayor Orde went elected in City 61, said, "We're going to make it easier for the residents and combine the two," and we lost our way. And then we had to find landfills, and certainly during the late '40s and '50s, we still had the glow of the conservation movement of World War II and the Depression, but all that changed. And then they just kept driving out to the valley, and as you mentioned, 38 locations in what is Mr. Cardenas's district, I believe, and they just kept going and going and going. It wasn't until they kept ruining nature that someone, and Mr. Burnson, but you were his man below who saw the light, if I could, and created this. When you have a legacy, and legacy's important, you did create this atmosphere to think differently. So I just wanted to thank you and be proud to work with you, Gregory, on all that you have done. And the schools, too, what you mentioned, from 17 to now well over 2/3 of the schools plus now have blue bins, and even non-public schools, because it's all the same. Trash knows no public, private, Catholic, whatever it is school, they know it's trash, but to break the cycle. So good things are happening because of your leadership on this, and we will carry on. I remember—I told this to Ruth Galanter, because Ruth was a passionate environmentalist. She would go through the trash cans here before there were blue cans to separate that, and she took it as a compliment, which was special. But I always think of you when I look at a canyon, and now that it's saved. And I know—I always did appreciate Mr. Alarcon's skill when he worked with Mayor Riordan to deal with Lopez Canyon, which was a very key issue in the '90s, and how you worked that, because canyons, once they're filled, they're gone. And that happened to Toyon Canyon in Griffith Park, Bishop Canyon in Allegiant Park, finally has been turned into a great recreation. Mr. Reyes and his predecessor worked diligently on Bishop Canyon. So hopefully positives could come from all these works that are being done. And I especially want to say the fact that you did travel and see the world, because in built industrialized countries around the world, within neighborhoods, there's sanitation facilities that find a way to coexist. And the Bureau of Sanitation's done a great job, and I know Enrique is still here, right there standing, I want to thank you. But let's just take a minute, not only to thank Greg, but thank all the workers from sanitation who daily do something for Los Angeles. Thank you, and thank you—the people who are not within the sound of my voice, who are out on trucks diverting trash now to the leadership that we have. Thank you for Renew LA.
Thank you. Mr. Kukorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, it's a very easy thing for anyone in elected office to stand up and say no to things, to stand up and say, "No landfills. Over my dead body, will there be a landfill?" That's an easy thing to do. The harder thing to do is figuring out how to make that real, because this city produces trash. And so the difficult job of leadership falls on those who are willing to say, "I'm going to figure out how to make that landfill unnecessary by diverting from our waste stream, by encouraging more recycling, by figuring out alternative uses for our waste stream." And that work, unfortunately, usually doesn't get the headlines. The person who pounds their fist on the table and says, "Over my dead body," usually gets the headlines. The person who does this work, unfortunately, is too often overlooked. And Greg, I just have to say that this is the kind of work that inspires me, because this is the work that we're all elected really to do, to solve problems, not just to scream, not just to raise our voices, but to figure out real, sustainable, workable solutions. And this is just yet another example of the kind of work that Greg Smith has done throughout his career, whether it's in figuring out how to deal with our waste, whether it's figuring out how to make this city better prepared for emergencies, whether it's figuring out not just to say, "I'm a friend of public safety," but to get into the police stations, get into the fire stations, and figure out how to make our community truly safer. That has been the kind of leadership that has— marked your career, Greg. And you've been an inspiration for me to work with. The model of your leadership, of knowing how to disagree without being disagreeable, I think we can use much more of in public service. I'm proud to have worked with you, and I'm going to miss you. Thank you, Greg.
Mr. Bernard Parks.
Gregory, we said some of this at the, I know it's Greg, I just wanted to call you out of your name. For years, people have called me Bernie, and it's not my name, but I just answer. But the thing is, is that I just want to say thank you. Greg and I have gone back for a number of years in a variety of things, from police to being a staffer, and I was on the police department, him being a reserve officer, a variety of things, coming here, been on committees together. I'd have to tell you that impact, I didn't have a clue when I came on council about all of these issues as related to saving waste and dealing with the issue of landfills. In fact, Greg stopped talking to me for about a month because I went out to a meeting, lost my head, went to a meeting on Sunshine Canyon, and supported another position. But we got back together on that. But the issue is, is that he has brought so much attention on these issues that are hard to deal with, hard to understand. So many times, you can just fluff over it and say, "Just too complicated. Let somebody else do it." But he stayed with it. I was on the Renew L.A. Committee. You learn so much just listening from his personal experience, going around the world, finding out. And although people will criticize elected officials for taking trips, you actually do learn something if you go to the right trips. And so these are things that I think are important, that he showed that he could change the dynamics of an entire region by his interests. And don't forget his work on earthquakes, prevention, and basically building and safety. Those are the kind of legacies that, he may not have his name in print and on lights at L.A. Live. But the issue is that he will be never forgotten because of the lives he saved as it relates to earthquake prevention, but also on the issue of how we deal with our land use, how we deal with our communities, how do we find a different way to get rid of something we all do? We create trash. And he found the better way to do it. And we look at the figures, just in the time I've been on council, it's remarkable that people thought probably if you reached just 1/4 of that, it would have been success. But to see what's happened in the last five to seven years has just been remarkable. Congratulations.
Thank you. Mr. Zine.
Well, Mr. Smith, my colleague, Reserve Officer LAPD, I think your staff should come stand behind you, and the new council member to be. Our conversation earlier this morning was that this is your final council meeting. And I was sad to hear that. I was sad, well, after hearing the, because we were going to keep it a secret. I said, "What about the accolades? And what about the resolutions?" He said, "You don't have any more room for resolutions on your walls." But the fact of the matter is, this appears to be the farewell for Councilmember Greg Smith, which is a sad day for me, since you and I share districts, the 12th and the 3rd. And we've worked LAPD together. We went out in a patrol car one night and got in some altercation with a suspect. And it's been a wonderful experience, and it's not going to be the same not having you here. It's going to be a different situation.
If you could bring it back to Renew L.A., Mr. Zine.
Pardon me?
Now that you've thrown something into the punchbowl, can you bring it back to Renew L.A.?
Well, no, you already threw in the punchbowl. I'm just trying to put it out there, since this is, this is something that I thought we would do in a formal session, but it's more informal from what I've been told. But as far as the trash, you led the crusade on that. As far as the earthquakes, you carried on with Hal Bernson to try and make it a safe place. And your dedication, and your wife, Chris, and your family. And I know you have a lot more years ahead of you. You're in good health. You still go out and solve crimes with the LAPD. And it's been, it's been a real, real friendship. It's sad to see you go. But the dedication you've had, and the opportunities you've had, and serving on budget with Mr. Parks, and going through that process, year after year after year, and on public safety as the Chair, when you've got wisdom, insight, two master's degree, and all types of wonderful accolades, you are a true, true friend. And I'm really sad to see you go. And I know that it's going to be a huge void to fill, especially with someone half your height to fill your shoes. Well, you are half his height, Mitch.
Thank you.
Well, no, Tom Labange, it's my turn, not yours. You'll get your turn later. But anyway, Greg, all the things you've done, and the citing of how we're going to make it a better place for our children and your grandkids, I mean, it's sadness that I have to say that. But you always have a friend here. You always have an ally. And you always have a partner when you need backup. So God bless you, Chris, and the family. Thank you.
Thank you. We are on Renew L.A. right here. To remind folks, that's what we are in order discussing. Before anybody goes nuts, Mr. Smith's last day is on Friday. He is expected to be here in council, and he is excused for the two meetings after that. So I do expect that he will be here. Next council member is Mr. Wesson.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. I, too, thought that we would do this in more of a formal setting. And to respond to Mr. Zine, even though I enjoy very much working with Mr. Smith, and we would jokingly try to come up with Smith and Wesson motions or what have you, that I don't have a problem with his replacement being half his size. So I would recruit any person, 5, 6, and under, to seriously consider joining the Los Angeles City Council so that we could grow our short caucus. But I just want to say, I just want to say this, that Mr. Smith, you are without a doubt a class act. It's been a pleasure serving with you. And you are the type of person that tries to address the problem and take your motions and put them in the back and try to really get the job done. So I think you're a class act. I think you're a gentleman. I think you will be missed. And it's been an honor to serve with you for slightly over five years. But more importantly, it's been an honor to know you since 1987. And so I will miss you. I will, will miss you, and we'll try to get a feel for how Mr. Englander is going to act. Hopefully, he's learned things from you and not just from Mr. Bergoff and Mr. Englander, or what have you. Anyway, you know, this chapter in your life is closing. Enjoy the new chapter.
Tom Labange.
I want to mention, if it's possible, for the recycling issues in your book that you have here, Greg, that you do have the paragraph that covers recycling in city buildings here, specifically in the council chambers here. And if you could, I understand you are going to continue to be a reserve officer with LAPD. If you could be behind Mr. Zine, because he does go in the wrong trash can sometime, you could do the action of both the city. Just wanted to get that, when you could help, when Central Division is short, no intent, pun intended there, Mr. Wesson, when they're short on staffing, you could cover for the sergeants up here. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we will move to note and file. Mr. Smith's report. And with that, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Duly noted and filed. Okay, guys. Save it for Friday, and don't vote against him on 21. Let's take up item 21. Mr. Smith.
Thank you very much. And first of all, lesson learned, don't ever tell Dennis Zine a secret. And secondly, I didn't know we had another roast in the city of L.A. that's now here in this chamber. But anyway, thank you for those kind words. I appreciate very much the sentiment. As Mr. Rosendahl just alluded to, I just wanted to do a MacArthur and just slowly fade away. But item 21 is the culmination of what we began with the Renew project. And Mr. Alacon brought forth some very poignant and appropriate discussions, which I will address shortly. What we have here is the extraordinary opportunity. In Renew L.A., we pointed out that we needed to do other things with our trash, that recycling alone was not the only solution, that reuse was not the only solution, that we needed creative ways to address our trash in the city of L.A., which amounts to 3,600 tons every single day of the week going to landfills. And what we have before you is an instruction to go forward in that process. It's a great opportunity. The incredible work that was done in SRRP I alluded to just a moment ago, went to the citizens of L.A. and said, "Here's the things we could be doing. What do you think?" And what we heard every single one of those, and I attended many of those meetings around the city, was, "We want more recycling. We want more reuse. And by the way, why aren't you doing what those other countries are doing to create energy and useful products from trash instead of putting it in the landfill? Why aren't you doing that now? What are we waiting for?" That was a common theme that came through. And in the final SRRP plan, that was really addressed. What we went to do is, we hired the consulting firm at HDR. We put together a team, and they're sitting out here, professionals that went around the world, and people criticize some of the trips politicians make. There is nothing like taking a trip to Germany to smell their trash. There is nothing like taking a trip to Marseille to smell trash, because when you go back to the hotel room, you smell like trash. There is nothing good that really can say that comes out of that, other than we brought forth a policy option to you today. And that is an instruction to go forward with these facilities. We employed the use of AQMD, and the AQMD staff was outstanding. Caltech, UC Davis, and Riverside, which have experts in this field. We brought forth County Sanitation, L.A. Department of Water and Power, and Cal Recycled, to look at our plans, to buy into our plans. I can tell you, Mr. Alacon, that one complaint we had was, the old thinking is that you're burning trash, you're creating emissions that we don't want in our neighborhoods. These facilities don't do that. And one of the facilities we actually saw, I think, was in Belgium, was on the property, right next to the building where they're taking this trash, is a Burger King. I don't know if that's an indictment on Burger King, or a statement that these are really safe, but the communities buy into them in Europe, they understand the value. And most importantly, we proved without a shadow of doubt that landfills create more emissions than any of these sites that you're going to see today. Landfills create up to three times more emissions than any of the reference plants that we saw around the world. And that is an argument that has played very well with the environmental community, who we brought in to be part of the review process, and engaged them and asked them to be participants. And you will see, when we come back with our actual contracts and plans, that the environmental community in many, many sectors will be here supporting these alternatives. Because in today's world of emissions, and today's world of global warming, the environmental community knows that the alternative landfills is not the best alternative, that the convergent technologies that you will hear from today are and truly are the future and the best option. We had 13 bidders came forward. When we put out an RFP, that came forward and said, "We want to build these." We narrowed the list to seven, and finally to four qualified bidders. After review by the peers, they came forward with a selection. When it went to the Board of Public Works, there was two options. One was to build a mature technology facility and an emergent technology facility. And we looked at a tremendous facility in Israel, but the facility had very large limitations in what we call the emergent technologies. And so we've not been able to put that deal together. But the original RFP called for two facilities. What we're proposing today in my motion 21A is language that will allow us, as instructed by the Board of Public Works, to contract with both top bidders. Both green convergent technologies did a tremendous job. I looked at their plant in Hamburg. This plant is amazing. They have taken their trash, and they do burn it, but in the new technologies, capture the NOx emissions and bring it down below the standards of AQMD, below any other average in the world, actually, and have a very clean facility. But they take their trash and convert it into an ash, which they've used to build the port of Hamburg. It is used in cement, in building their streets and other facilities. They create energy from the gas that comes out of it, and the sin fuels that come out of it, and they create energy, which is very useful to us, and is accepted on the California RPS standards as acceptable source of energy. And also in Hamburg, which is a very cold city in the winter, they actually create heating for their commercial core of the city of Hamburg. The other facility that we're entertaining today is Ubassar. This is the largest in the world. We've referenced many of the facilities. I saw the facilities in Barcelona and Marseille. This is a facility that uses many technologies. They go into anaerobics, gasification. They create a green compost out of much of the trash. They create energy out of the trash. This is a technology that has a very broad base, and they also have one of the best pre-processing systems in the world. And so the Board of Public Works said, "We want to contract with both." They were both very close. They were outstanding bidders, one one in one category, the other one in the other categories. It was, to them, a no-brainer. And since Renew L.A. called for seven facilities, they recommended that we contract with both and go forward. Since the ability to contract in the emerging area has fallen on the wayside for the moment, the motion I have before you would be say, "Let's go forward as the Board of Public Works suggested, begin contract negotiations with the green convergent technologies that won the bid, and also with the second bidder, Ubassar, who is one of the top in the world, and say, "We're going to come forward with two options for you." And as identified in Renew L.A., we didn't want to focus on just one technology. We wanted a broad-based approach to our solution. And that is what is coming for you today. So it is one, that will bring forward two facilities out of the seven we were supposed to build. It will bring forward a opportunity to create energy that meets the RPS standards, much of which Mr. Kerkorian wrote in the state legislature, and thank you for that. It meets with our standards here in Los Angeles. It brings great companies to us that have all the options we have asked for. And it will, as you will see later on, meet with the standards of most of the environmental community, who have been willing to listen to that. And Ms. Galanter was mentioned a bit ago. Ruth Galanter actually went to the Hamburg facility, is very supportive of this as well. And I think that bodes very well for what we are saying here today, that you have an opportunity to do the best thing for the city of L.A. The Hamburg facility is proposing of getting rid of 99% of the trash that will go into that facility, 99% diversion rate. On top of which, they will reduce the NOx emissions to five parts per million, way under the 17 average in Europe, and way under AQMD requirements. The Ubassar plan will get us to 97% diversion rate. And again, will create the gasification, which creates fuels for our trucks. Will also create anaerobic digestion, which creates compost, which can be used in agricultural applications, and also creates power. This is the best of all worlds for us, I think, ladies and gentlemen. And the instructions before you is to go forward with two, both contractors, negotiate contracts and bring them back to this council before we get into citing issues and before we actually approve anything. All we're doing today is saying to the Board of Public Works, after five years of very hard work to get us to this point, to go forward with contracts and bring them back to you to let you decide if these are good contracts or bad contracts, if they're exactly what you want, if the environmental issues Mr. Alacon brought forward have been addressed, and it is the best process for the city of L.A. And so I urge your support of the amendment 21A and the report before you. Thank you very much. I'll answer questions.
Thank you. And perhaps because this is one of your final meetings, Mr. Alacon has pressed his button. I think he has some problems with your issues here. Mr. Alacon.
It's unconscionable that you would try to bait the...
Come on. You told me that. You said you can't believe what he's doing.
On such an easy item.
Mr. Smith, if you could just explain 1A, I don't understand the five parts per million, and not so much that, but why there is no similar 2A. What's the significance of that?
What are you referring to 1A?
1A is that the contractor promised to meet, no, I'm sorry. Yes, that promised to meet consistently with the city in regard to the five parts per million air emission standard that the contractor proposed, or cure the city financially for not doing so. There isn't a similar provision in the second contract. I was just curious, I don't even know what it does.
Yeah. Well, the five parts per billion in the NOx emissions is their proposal. There is only one reference facility, I think one or two in the world, that have met that and not on a consistent basis. It is an extremely low and extremely ambitious, and if they can achieve it, God bless them, we should be touting this all over the world. They say they will achieve it, and so that's what the reference is. If they don't achieve it, the reference is that they will have to then buy emission credits from AQMD to offset that. So it relieves us of the responsibility if they can't make the number that they think they can make. They believe they can make it, and I hope that they can. It is extremely low. Ubassar is a little bit higher than that, but the reference standard of AQMD is 17 parts per billion.
Okay, okay.
So it's far... So it's far below that. Landfills are in the 30s and 40s. So it's far below what landfills are emitting currently today, and it is the most ambitious I've seen in the world.
Okay, thank you. And the second provision, that we exclude Sunshine Canyon landfill as a site for consideration?
Yeah, that's a preference. And you know, someday, and I've said many times to the people in Grand Hills, someday that may be the best option, if we can begin to close Sunshine Canyon as a landfill and then replace it with one of these facilities, that would make sense. But that's a future decision that we are not making today, nor are we citing any of these facilities today.
So this is a provision to recognize that Sunshine is--
It's already held up.
Is it the only active--
Landfill in the city.
Recipient of trash, landfill?
Landfill, yeah, municipal solid waste, yes.
Pardon me, are there no other facilities?
In the city of L.A., no.
In the city of L.A.?
Yeah. There are waste facilities, but they're not Class 1 dumps with MSW.
Okay, I agree, I understand.
Mr. Reyes?
I was listening intently, and I wanted to just have a clear understanding of the process in terms of, when we look at the report from the head of the hock, on number three, we have a request the city attorney review the legal issues in connection with the concurrent negotiations. So the way I understand it is that two companies, distinct skill sets, capabilities, achieving the goals, and therefore, that requires us to move concurrently, and making sure that the city attorney is structuring the process so that legally it's transparent, and everybody knows that. The reason why we need two is because we have two different goals that were identified within the process. So this, and the reason why I say that rhetorically and publicly, I want to make sure it's not misinterpreted as saying that now we had an RFP, we couldn't decide between one and two, so they're both going to go. It's not that. So I wanted to make sure that was said for the public record, and that the integrity of the process remains intact because of the separate achievements that have been defined by the process as has been proposed today. Okay, thank you.
Mr. President, Mr. Reyes, we have a letter from Lathan Watkins Company, who represents Ubassar, who will indemnify the city from any damages should there be a lawsuit on this point. I've discussed with Mr. Bergoff and his client that they have no intention to do that, but should someone want to do that, they will indemnify us from any losses on that point.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. There are no additional speakers in the queue on this matter. Mr. Clerk, what is the action to be taken on this item?
Madam President, now would be the time to vote. You have before you item 21 as amended by 21A.
All right, please open the roll. Close the roll, and then tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Thank you very much. Next item.
Madam President, that brings us to item 22, called special for Councilmember Labange.
Mr. Labange? Yeah, just to let me, you want to take them first?
Take the cards first.
Okay, John Walsh, John Walsh, Arnold Sacks. Is Arnold Sacks here? Come on up, Mr. Sacks. Whoever gets here first can speak first.
Madam President--
Yes, sir.
While they're coming forward, if I may, first of all, ask that they go forthwith.
Forthwith, yes.
And secondly, I have to thank Nicole Burnson, who has been my partner in this, and Mitchell Englander. It's been a long, long road, and your colleague, who will join you in a little over a week, Mitch Englander, has been a part of this all the way, and he will take over from me, and I have no regrets whatsoever that he will follow through on this, because I know he knows what we're doing and the importance of it. So thank you to Mitch, thank you in particular to Nicole Burnson, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr.--
On behalf of all of us, Mr. Smith, this is the report signed by your colleagues today, and I'm recycling it to you.
All right, Mr. Walsh.
Thank you, John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. This is my wallet, Mr. Smith. I promised you $20 for your book. I keep my promises, I'll go upstairs and buy it. And these cheapskates out here, they all got free books. Only the public bought one of the books. And thank you, as far as, this is a Griffith Park train ride. Congratulations, you've killed nobody on the train ride. You've killed one person over here on Angel's Flight, and the Blue Line is the deadliest to passengers, not to passengers, but to pedestrians and auto inhabitants, those inside autos in America, the Blue Line. I hope that GPRAH does an excellent job in safety, because the Blue Line is a safety nightmare, and so is the Angel's Death. One minute, HollywoodHighlands.org.
Mr. Sacks?
Yes.
Mr. Sacks passes. Mr. Labange?
I vote in a friendly amendment that the Department of Recreation and Parks works with the council office on impacted concessions by the River Supply Conduit Public Works Project, L A D W P.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Please open the roll on that item. Seconded by Mr. Kerkorian. All right, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That says amended. Forthwith on that item, please. Next item.
Item 25, called special for cards.
All right, let's see. Dr. Williams, Dr. Williams is not present. John Walsh, and Wayne Spindler, Mr. Spindler.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, speaking from inside L.A. City Council at the corner of First and Main, which will be called the Conan O'Brien Square. That's not a pun, Conan O'Brien Square. Number 20, this is number 25 vandalism. $1,000. I just want everyone out there to know, if you see somebody who's vandalizing property, and you go to the police, and they are apprehended, you will receive $1,000. There will also be a gang, they will write a contract out for your life for considerably more than $1,000. But I would like to know, at $1,000 apiece, you have a couple of them up here. How many $1,000 awards have we bestowed on those who are brave enough to buck the graffiti crews? HollywoodHighlands.org, one minute.
I had a card on 21, which you didn't call. I clearly had a card on that. On CD1, we have a serious tagging problem around Dodger Stadium on the 5 freeway, on the 110 pass. Houses that are in the area near Dodger Stadium have to look at graffiti on the overpass and the bridges and the freeways. And on a radio station the other night, they were commenting how Dodger attendance is down so dramatically. Well, you just have to drive down the 5 freeway, and you will see a wall of tagging all the way across from one side to the other. Then you turn on the 110 freeway, and then where there's a fence and a rock formation-type wall, it is constantly tagged. And Mr. Reyes does nothing to send crews out there to get that tagging removed. Now, you go out to Orange County, I go to Ducks games a couple of times a year, I go to Angel games occasionally, it's just a very long drive. They have a policy that as soon as they see tagging, they go out into the field and immediately remove it the same day, doesn't matter how big or small the job is. I've seen that freeway on the 5 go for weeks with just huge tagging displays. So we have somebody here in that district, near Pasadena Street and Daly, that stepped up, and I think these awards are too small. I think if you can find apprehension and arrest of tagging crews, you should make the award $50,000. If they can apprehend an actual tagging crew, because these are professional thugs that leave their imprimatur on the city. The cost to the city in this tagging is in the tens of millions of dollars of lost revenue and business. So you're giving them not enough money, I don't think. Thank you.
All right, thank you. There are no more cards in the queue, and there are no speakers in the queue, so Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Next item.
That brings us to item 28, called special for cards.
Mr. Walsh? Mr. Walsh, you have two more minutes.
More minutes to live. HollywoodHighlands.org, H I G H L A N D S. Very, this is about the zoo. You know, we had a leopard, I believe it was a leopard, a wildcat died at the zoo. We are demanding that every time an animal dies at the zoo, that there be an autopsy. You have, I mean, I don't think you treat the other animals any better than you treat the elephant. We even had Cher of Sunny and Cher come here for the elephant. We're telling you right now that there is widespread abuse of animals at the zoo. How many animals have died? And have, do you have a process for autopsying the animals? You know, the animals are at the bottom of-- you know, when humans get treated terribly, they can complain, but animals can sign complaint forms. One minute.
All right, open the roll on that item, please. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you very much. Next item? You want to go forthwith on that? Thanks, Mr. Labange. Next item.
That brings us to item 31, called special for cards.
Okay, Mr. Sacks, you have two more minutes, come on up, and Mr. Walsh, you have one more minute. So whoever gets to the mic first can speak first. Mr. Walsh, you can come up too. Whoever gets here first can speak first. Okay?
Column 1, and one from column 2. Thank you so much, Madam President. I was just curious why there's a need. Section A of this motion mentions the Community Development Trust Fund, number 424, the 36th year. Section C of this number says a new account. Section B is a Community Development Trust Fund of American Recovery and Reinvestment Act Funds, or ARA funds. But section 1 and section, section A and section C are exactly the same. The difference is that section C is for a new account. Why not take all the money, $869,844, because it's all for the same, it's all going into the same accounts, it's all going for the same processes? Why not just take $869,844 from the account one time? It's mind-boggling.
Mr. Walsh?
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. This is almost a million dollars for improvements, quote-unquote, in a local neighborhood city hall. Now, we just don't need, we don't need them in Boyle Heights, we don't need anything. We just need better service. We need improvements, not as citizens, not as far as this city hall is concerned. And I'm speaking from the city hall, which is at the corner of Conan O'Brien Square. That is not Conan O'Brien, is Square, that's the Square of Conan O'Brien. He's brought a lot of money to the city, name something after him. HollywoodDems, D E M S, at gmail dot com. Send us your email and become a friend at Mickey Jackson, M I K I Jackson. HollywoodHighlands.org. Goodbye.
Thank you very much. Open the roll on that. Item, please. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Next item.
Madam President, we have the closed session items, as well as a special item.
Let's do the special first. Okay. All right, well, why don't we go into closed session, then?
You want to do the rule 23?
The rule 23? Oh, it's Mr. Parks? You want to do the rule 23 first? Okay. All right, why don't we take care of that rule 23?
Mr. President, I believe the city attorney will speak to the findings reluctantly. We will hear from the city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. On June 20th, the CIO was informed by outside investors that the tax and revenue anticipation notes resolution must be amended to allow for interest payments to be made on or before maturity of the notes. Immediate action is required to adopt an amended resolution today in order to prepare and release the supplemental preliminary statement by Friday. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code, Section 54954.2, before considering the substantive motion.
All right, I retract my earlier statement. The usual eloquence and insight that the city attorney provides was yet again provided here today. With that, let's take a vote on the findings. Prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
It is before us. Mr. Parks?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'd ask the CIO to give us a brief explanation of why this is important and why it benefits the city of Los Angeles to move forward on this amended resolution.
Sure. Hato CIO, currently, we're getting market feedback from investors that there's strong interest in having multiple interest payments for immaturity. This investor preference will allow the city to generate some cost savings, because they're willing to pay more for this preference. Therefore, we will get lower interest rates overall.
So we'll save the city money and give our investors more flexibility?
Correct.
Okay. Also, we have an article that you wanted to share with the council.
Yes.
Council colleagues, we have an article that also holds hand in hand with this amended resolution, that bond buyers article, in which our CIO was prominently quoted in about the financial health of the city of Los Angeles. It is very critical at this time that we reflect the strongest position possible, because we are going out to the market for $1.3 billion worth of bond funds for not only our issue of our medical pension, but our cash flow for the first six months of the year. So this is a very important adjustment for the benefit of the city. And I vote.
All right, we have one public speaker card on this. Wayne Spindler, would that come forward on special one?
Surprise, special one. Well, I don't know how you run a city exactly like this. I don't know how much money is involved in something like this, but usually when we hear special one, and it involves something financial, it's a disaster. And we had item four, and Corretts didn't know what it was. In fact, I'm looking at the chairs right now, and we don't even have a quorum here. I don't think we even have a quorum here in this meeting. But how can you, on a Wednesday, before a coming holiday break, talk about adjusting an interest payment on billions of dollars of notes? How do you do that? You bypass the finance committee? You finance, you bypass the controller? You bypass the city attorney? You even bypass the mayor, if he's ever in town? How do you run a city like that on a special calendar? Who knows how much money is involved? Are we saving money? And you just jump in here on something involving millions of dollars at the last second and just say, okay, we have an emergency here because we are owing people, bondholders, money? And this is the kind of thing that Moody's talked about this city before. When they downgraded this city at the time when D W P wouldn't transfer the 70-some million dollars you needed, the city's finances are very unstable. Any adjustment anywhere could result in the city being in a very dire predicament. And this council, I know, spent a lot of time trying to put a budget together, which they did, not a good budget, but a budget, and to alter something that could affect that balance on a special, it's absurd. that balance on a special, it's absurd. And I think what you should do is seriously consider not allowing this type of fiscal policy for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Mr. Sacks next on this.
Very quickly, two things. Since you're, according to what Councilman Parks is, getting ready to solicit more bonds from the banks, will this again be the banks that have court cases pending against the city that, as plaintiffs, for various reasons, will be, these be the same banks that you'll be looking to get the funding from because they're the only banks and the only financial institutions that will be issuing the bonds because of their standing in court cases against the City of L.A.? Will we have to listen to this argument again, as we've had for the last two years, about how we're under the, how the City of L.A. is under the barrel there, or under the gun? And question, and referring, the previous speaker mentioned the city's financial crisis and the DWP. Well, when you allow 125 millions of the, 125 million dollars to be transferred into the next fiscal year, certainly you're going to be under fiscal restraints.
Thank you, Mr. Parks.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify in case anybody in the public was misled by a couple of the speakers. Number one, this issue was approved by the council at a previous meeting. It identified the underwriters that have been pre-approved on a bench by this council. This is merely adjusting the interest rates for the benefit of the city that you may save money on this transaction. And so the transaction is already being approved, and the reason that it came to our attention at this time is we actually have city personnel in New York dealing with the underwriters at this time on the bonds, and they brought this to our attention, that it would be our benefit to give this flexibility in the payment of the interest rates. And so it's a savings to the city, it's a previously approved trans that we do each year, and it's something that's in the, overall, that we are adjusting to the current market and making this particular request.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. With that, let's go ahead and prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
All right, that is approved. Yes, Mr. Smith?
If I may, Commissioner Alarcon, the other, the good Alarcon is down here. I want to thank the commissioner. She was the one that really took on that Renew L.A. Plan and the facility plan in the Board of Public Works, and she's been a great commissioner. She was an intern for mine, and we go back a long ways, and I, for Hal Berenson, not me, but we go back a long ways, and I appreciate the work you've done over there. You're doing a great job, so I just want to thank her publicly.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Commissioner. Great, great work. We'll send that last item, Special One, forthwith as well. There's been a request to jointly refer the item 37 to audits as well. Is that still, would you, if does anybody have a, if not, we will jointly refer that if there's no objection. Okay? Okay, it's been done. Okay, let's go to the two closed session items. In accordance with California state law, we'll now go into executive session for legal matters that are before the city. And, yes, Mr., sorry, oh, is there comment cards? My apologies. Have these had public hearings, Mr. Clerk? These have not? Yes, sir. Both 35 and 36 were heard in their, in their respective committees. 36 was heard in Budget and Finance, 35 in ITGA as well as Budget and Finance. Anybody wish to reopen the public hearing? Seeing none, we will then go into closed session in accordance with California state law. Thank you very much. Please, nobody leave. We're at 10 members right now. Exactly, we're back in open session, and we need to vote on the items that are before us. Mr. Clerk, first item.
Mr. President, item 35, there is a recommendation for settlement with Time Warner, in which Time Warner will pay to the city the sum of $825,000 in franchise fees owing from January 2006 to December 2007, as well as the sum of $300,000 in communication users tax owing from April 2008 to April 2009, and agrees that it will continue to remit communication user taxes to the city.
All right, let's prepare the roll and tabulate the vote on that settlement.
Ten eyes.
Okay, well, let's move forthwith on that since we are getting money for the city. Next item, please.
Item 36, there is a recommendation for settlement in the amount of $500,000 in the case entitled Martha Ruda and Regulo Puebla versus City of Los Angeles.
Okay, let's go ahead and prepare the roll on that settlement and tabulate the vote.
Ten eyes.
And that will be approved. Next order of business, please. Yep, yep.
And forthwith, please.
Thirty-one, forthwith. You got it. Any other business items?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
Let's post and refer them.
There are excuses on the desk.
Let's run through our excuses.
Councilmember Zine requests to be excused on August 9th, 10th, and 12th for personal business. That meets council policy.
Mr. Zine, what sort of personal business is it? All right, then you're excused.
Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused on June 29th for furlough. A motion is required.
That takes us down to how many?
That would take us down to three members prior to 1:00 p.m. and one member, excuse me, and it takes us down to 12 members prior to 1:00 and 11 after 1:00 p.m.
Okay, that's fine, I'll move that. Mr. Smith, seconds, and we'll go ahead and move approval without objection. Next item, or next excuse.
Councilmember Perry requests to leave at 1:00 on June 29th for city business. A motion is required.
And that takes, on the 29th, you said? June 29th?
June 29th, yes.
And that takes us down to how many members?
It would be 12 members before 1:00 and 11 members after 1:00.
That's fine, we'll move approval of that. Mr. Zine, go ahead without objection. Next excuse.
That, excuse me, Councilmember Perry requests to be excused on July 1st due to personal business. That meets council policy. That would take us down to...
That's on July 1st?
Yes. That would take...
Okay, sorry, sir. All right, we, let's hold that excuse on the desk until our next meeting.
Very good. Mr. President, the desk is clear.
Do we have any announcements, colleagues? Yes, Mr. Parks.
I have an announcement. I'd like to have Greg Smith stand up and present him with his retirement badge for the City Council. He's the only person who can have to make a judgment when he leaves home, to decide whether it's the reserve badge or the council badge, and that's a decision he has to make. I told him personally that if he ever shows up at the podium, we're going to get him home quickly, when he's there yelling for his two minutes or three minutes.
Two minutes, that's all he gets.
Yeah, that's all he gets, and six minutes for the total meeting. So I just want to make sure, but I want to give him his retirement badge and say thank you.
They don't need his stupid badges.
Thank you for doing that before his final meeting on Friday. We appreciate that, Mr. Parks. Any other announcements, colleagues? Do we have any adjourned motions today? If I could ask everybody, please rise in our council chambers for adjourned motions, starting with, Mr. Corrin, do you have motions or those other papers? Okay, Mr. Labange.
Members, I ask we say, Richard Gonzalez, 52 years old. He worked for Caltrans. Tragically, he was killed on State Route 94 in San Diego County. He's worked for Caltrans for several years. He's the third Caltrans employee to be fatally injured. So we stand in reverence for our brothers and sisters who take care of our highways in California. He's survived by his wife Ruth and his son, two sons, Ron and Eric. I ask we adjourn in memory of Richard Gonzalez.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask that the council adjourn in memory of Michael Perry. Mike was loved by many in Westchester community where he lived for over 20 years and served on the Westchester Park Advisory Board until cancer suddenly took his life in a matter of a few months. He's remembered by all for his positive spirit, his infectious smile, and sharp intellect. He's survived by his wife, Luanne, who works as a substitute teacher in the Los Angeles Unified School District, and his two sons, Sean, age 15, and Dominique, age 14. Services for Mike will be held on Saturday, June 25, 2011, at St. Monica's Church at 9:00 a.m. Interment will follow at Holy Cross Cemetery on Slosson Avenue in Culver City. There will be a reception at the cemetery following his interment. The family's request for those wishing to make a donation in lieu of flowers, a soccer scholarship fund for the college-bound students that volunteer with the American Youth Soccer Organization, Region 7, has been set up. May he rest in peace. And his colleagues just all of a sudden noticed him not looking well, feeling well, and he suddenly died. Westchester is still in shock and are missing him terribly. May he rest in peace.
Thank you. Mr. Zine?
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. President, Leon Gross, Leona Gross, born in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, March 16, 1919, passed away this past Saturday. Grew up during the Depression. After high school, wanted to be a nurse. There was no money to send her to school, so she went to work as a secretary to help support her family. After the death of her brother-in-law Jerry in 1958, and the death of her sister Ruth in 1962, she raised two nieces, Janice, who worked for me, and Kathy, along with her daughters Barbara and Judith. At the age of 50, she went to work at University of Pittsburgh as the Executive Secretary to the head of the Graduate School of Engineering. In 1989, she moved to San Diego and lived there until her death. She'll be greatly missed, survived by her brother, daughters, and nieces, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren. And Janice Freeman Ross was raised by Leona, and Janice Freeman Ross worked in my office for a number of years, a dear friend. May she rest in peace, Leona Gross.
Thank you. If that concludes it, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you, Mr. President, for the opportunity.